Good morning, everybody. It's nine o'clock on Thursday, May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Going to convene the board today, Lyon County Board of County Commissioners. Today's agenda action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Today, the Board of County Commissioners convened as other boards, members of the Board of County Commissioners also serves as the Liquor Board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. And this meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. We will be breaking today at eleven thirty for lunch. And then we'll be convening an emergency meeting for Declaration of Emergency. The roll call today, we have all five commissioners in chambers. And today's invocation will be given by Nathan Sam Whistler of the United Methodist Church. Please stand.
Thank you. Good morning. Let us pray. Gracious Father, we come before you this day, this morning, and giving you thanks for your love and your mercy. We thank you for those who serve at every capacity, their community, their county, their state, and their country, and their family, and above all, you. We come before you this morning in person across the digital airways, asking for your blessing and guidance over this assembly of volunteers, concerned citizens, representatives, leaders, and decision makers. Grant this assembly of men and women the wisdom to govern at best in the interest of the citizens and of the communities they serve. Hear our humble intercession, oh God. And may we keep in mind your people, your creation, your love, that your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Remove from our minds hatred, prejudice, and contempt for those who are different and not of our own race, color, gender, class, creed, what have you. That departed from everything that are strangers and divides us. May we be brought to unity by your spirit and the bond of peace. Teach us to see the people by the light of the faith we profess, that we may look within ourselves all the ungenerous judgments and presumptuous claims, that recognizing the needs and rightful claims of others, we may remove old hatreds and rivalries and begin new understandings of one another and for our communities. That we may bring our tributes of excellence and treasury to our common humanity. We thank you for all those who serve in the many different areas of our communities, our political leaders, our military, our emergency responders, our law enforcement, our healthcare workers, our educators, and those who do the thankless jobs in our communities. We thank you for them. We thank you for their service. We thank you for the representatives and the authentic leaders, men and women who love your people and can walk with them, who feel their pain and share their joys. May we come to you in unity through your son, Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Jacobson, will you reach in the flag, please?
A flag, which is issued as a flag of the United States of America to the Republic of British Sands. One nation under God, universal.
Thank you. Public participation today. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board of the board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item. But I should say agenda action item, but before the board takes any action afterward, please print your name at the clerk's desk. Oh, for possible action today, review and adoption of agenda. I have a motion to review and adopt the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Hey, and I will add to that motion that we will have an emergency meeting after we adjourn for lunch, that we're all aware of that. So with the motion and my addition of the emergency meeting, do I have a second?
Timmy. Okay.
Second, Mr. Chair, I don't know. The emergency meeting will be a separate meeting, so I don't know that it needs to be a part of this agenda with that, the addition.
Then I'll take that off. Have the original motion. Do I still have a second?
I'll still second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, so we have five zero. To adopt the agenda, time certain nine AM, and I believe we're going to have Mr. Foley come up for our public hearing. And on this, of course, we will be rolling into items fifteen, I think, through twenty-three, if I'm not mistaken, to have public hearing on all those various budgets that we have to look at. Oh, Mr. Foley, you've got the floor.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Council for the record. So for the first item, first time specific, what you'll want to do is just open the public hearing, take any public inputs, and then just to read into the record that there's a letter from the Department of Taxation stating the tentative budget is fully compliant with NRS. And so that's it with this item, and the next one will be adopted following the agenda.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing on the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four, item six A. Do we have any commissioner comments on anything they've read on the budget?
Um, yes. Mr. Foley, I had a question. In looking back at some of my notes, it seemed like, was there something that passed? Do we have to pay to have it in local newspaper, or can it go electronic? Or is it the publishing of our?
So NRS three fifty-four currently requires us to physically put into the newspaper at least seven days prior to the meeting and no more than fourteen days prior to the meeting. And it has to be physically published from the paper. I'd love to get all this changed at the legislature, but that's where we are.
Just for curiosity, how much does that cost?
Uh, it seems like, boy, now you're going to tax my memory.
If you don't have that answer, I get it.
Seems like it's around sixty-eight hundred dollars. Yeah, and the nice thing is, is I consolidate that and put one single posting in for every entity in Lyon County, including school districts, cities, fire districts, so that we pay for one publication, not one each.
I don't even know what paper it's in. I don't get the paper. I read my news on my phone and whatnot. What paper is it published?
It's in the Fernley Reader. The Lyon County Reader.
Lyon County, yeah. I mean, I was like, Fernley has its own newspaper.
Used to.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. I was just, that had nothing to do with this. Great job. Appreciate all your hard work. And I know we had a budget meeting and went through this, but again, we appreciate you. Good job.
Anybody else have a comment or question? All right. Any public comment? Um, public input? No. We just. Okay.
So that item is just a, an item to solicit public input on the, on the budget. So if you have none, you can close the public hearing and move on to the next agenda.
Okay, we can go on to the next public hearing for the other districts. I didn't know whether we would.
Only go to six B now?
A Department of Taxation letter for, to Mr. Foley. At the, they've examined your fiscal year twenty twenty-three tentative budget pursuant to NRS three five four point five nine six, parentheses five, and finds it to be in compliance with the law and appropriate regulations. So none of us are going to jail right now. Sounds like a great letter here that says you've done a super job, which we already knew. But so we did get our letter. So we will then move on to the public hearing for.
Don't we have to do six B first?
Um, I thought, I thought we need to do public hearing on each of the items before we, because they're all in that final budget.
No, that is different.
Just so the board is aware, we do have a number of nine o'clock time specifics throughout the budget hearings, but that just means we can't hear them before nine o'clock. So we'll, I plan on just going through our regular agenda all the way through until we get to those other ones instead of pop scot.
Okay, all right. I was not aware of that. I, I assume since they're all nine o'clock issues that we would hear them all, and then we would go ahead and approve the budget as a whole. So my confusion on that, sorry, I was in Alaska and nobody told me.
Too much halibut.
Yeah, salmon, salmon. All right, so we'll go on to six B then. For possible action, approve the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four. Any commissioner comments on that? Any public comments on that?
Mr. Chair, I am required to, Josh Foley, Lyon County Council for the record, I am required to disclose any differences between the tentative budget and the final budget at this point. The only differences are, only difference is that in the public defender's budget, we increased it by a hundred and forty-four thousand. And the board recently signed an agreement with both cities to provide public defender services for them. It's a pass through, really. We get reimbursed by the cities for the amount that they spend, and it's a hundred and forty-four thousand a year between the two cities that we do. And so I put that into the budget, both on the revenue side and the expenditure side. One of those things in state law, it makes no sense to me, but we have to comply with. So that's why the budget change.
Okay. Any questions on any of that? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we approve the final budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three and twenty-four.
A second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, the second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we pass it five zero. Thank you, Mr. Foley. And. Well, let's see, got two more minutes for our next time certain, so we will hold for actually about a minute and a half right now. And then we will have presentation only for presentation update from Porter Group on federal lobbying efforts. So if they would like to come to the podium, I'm sure by the time they get there, it'll be nine fifteen. We have anybody that's? That going to be on Zoom?
Porter Group will be on Zoom. I'm looking to see if they are on here now.
I don't see anybody. Um, gee. Yeah, Porter Group, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand or make some noise or let us know where you happen to be. If not, we will move on to the next nine fifteen.
Come back to that.
And we'll come back to this whenever they do come up. So give them a minute here. Don't see anybody. All right, then we're going to go on to the next time certain for presentation only. Introduction and presentation for the Battleborn Youth Challenge Academy from the program director, Andrew Ponder. And do we have? That presentation on Zoom?
You know, I don't see them on here either.
Me either. Let me. Everybody was notified correctly?
They were, yes.
Well, if they pop up on that, then we will go back to it. So moving on. Proclamation Resolution for Posible Action Presentation Proclamation Declaring May twenty twenty-three as Mental Health Awareness Month in Lyon County, Nevada. Got here. Presentation and proclamation declaring May twenty twenty-three as Mental Health Awareness Month in Lyon, Lyon County, Nevada. Whereas nearly one in five adults and one in five adolescents in the United States live with a mental illness. And whereas mental health impacts a person's emotional, social, environmental, financial, and overall well-being with significant disparities among racially and ethnically diverse communities. And whereas suicide is now the second leading cause of death for twenty, or I should say fifteen through twenty-four year olds. The teenagers experience a seventeen point three percent increase in use of anxiety medication since twenty-ten. Whereas one-third of the United States population lives in a county designated as a mental health professional shortage area. And whereas this an estimated forty-four percent of residents detained in jails are suffering from a mental illness, often with no, with, with co-occurring substance use disorders. And whereas Lyon County and all counties serve as a safety net for residents in need, first responders and operator of crisis lines, public hospitals and detention centers. Whereas Lyon County has developed and continues to bring innovative services such as the Mobile Outreach Safety Team, Forensics Assessment Services Triage Team, System of Care, and brought on a licensed clinical professional counselor to ensure individuals across the lifespan experiencing mental health and substance use disorders are connected to services to help them live flourishing and productive lives. And now therefore let it be proclaimed that Lyon County Board of Commissioners declares May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Lyon County to highlight the critical role of the county in providing crucial behavioral health services and resources to its residents. And be it further proclaimed, the Lyon County Board of Commissioners continues its commitment to partners with our community members to ensure that all mental health services are accessible, valuable, and culturally appropriate for all residents. So at this point. Have for possible action here. Do we have any comments from the commissioners or public on? Okay.
I was going all around. If you want to talk a little bit about the.
Sure you are.
Thank you.
So we do have a commissioner comment. Commissioner Keller, go ahead.
First, I, we're looking at resolutions and guys, you want to talk a little bit about resolutions first because we have three of them before us. First, going over resolutions or proclamations. They're unique to Lyon County. That's why we have them before us on this board. And I kind of looked through the, how they're done. Every three, every one of these is in a different format. And it's up to the person that provides it to us to write it into a format. It's their, their one time that they get to put a motion before the board and that we, in writing, that we, then we can adopt or change or deny or we can control, but it's the one time they can do it. And it's, we don't have a standard within the county of putting these forward. So I'd like to talk a little bit about that. Roberts Rules of Order is in eighty-five to ninety percent of all meetings in, in Nevada. Another eight to ten percent are under the standard code of parliamentary procedure. And then there's some other ones, Mason, but they all, the format for doing these on all those parliamentarian ways is the same way. And I'm not blaming anybody because if you go on the internet, you'll get all different kinds. I, I don't think they put a single right one in there in the first four pages. So I just wanted to bring that to our attention to where we can start maybe getting it in our procedures of how to do a resolution properly. And then we can, it'll be easier for other people to do resolution. So that's a procedural thing that we'll have to bring up later. As far as how, how you come across this, one of the things is you got the preamble, the whereas. And then you got the resolved. And the resolve is a, is basically a motion that you stand on. That's, that should stand on its own. The resolves, I mean, the whereas are supposed to be little known items that bring your attention or power to the result. Something that we don't know publicly or something unique. And it says, did you know this? Boom, got the power, push that across the line, not generalizations of this is the way the federal government or nationally or all the other ways are doing it. So looking at the one that we got right in front of us. The most important thing is the resolution itself. I mean, the, the proclaim, proclaim part. Which is fine, that's great. I love that. But the rest of it, we could have had more detail for us. I'll just pick out any of these. It could be any one of them, but none of them say locally what Lyon County does. And I've spoke to the sheriff and he, he said that he could provide some detail for the, some of the stuff that happens in the jails. As long as it isn't against a HIPAA thing or something like that. So we could have made this more personal for us, something that really we stood behind because now it becomes part of the board. It's like, we all are individuals, but once we vote, we represent the public, we represent everyone. And we should have a document that we all stand on and it really critical and it should be empowering. And to me, none of these are working that way. I do like the resolved, so I don't want it to go away. This mental health one, but I do want to work toward generalities, just take away from the, every resolution. In other words, are we just here to pass resolutions? I like dog bones for dogs. That's a resolution. So I don't, I think it should be more impactful. And as far as doing the actual format, I could go into the format of how it's done. And so to give you an example.
Commissioner Keller, I hate to interrupt you, but could we get this as an agenda item since I think it's an educational item?
Well, I'm going to dissect every one of these and I want to tell, I'm telling you why I'm going to dissect.
But we're proclaiming the resolution today, and we're not going to rewrite them today. So I'm looking at your educational information, which is important for us to know in the future, but not necessarily today for every one of these items to proclaim these items. So I'm just looking at, if we're going to tear each of them apart, we're looking at a significant amount of time, which of course we're going to be here all day anyway, but I'm just saying this sounds like something that's not on the specific agenda for action.
And here's where I differ with you and I, I respect your opinion, but this is our one time where we do make amendments. This is where we do change. That, I didn't make this, and it's not an approval or not an approval. We can make, we can make changes. And I could say why I want to make those changes. Why I want to remove something completely off there. It's still, like I just stated before, the proclaim part I agree with, but I might not agree with the rest. It might stand on its own just because of the proclaim. So I do have the right as a commissioner to speak on that. And I was just giving background on everything. So.
If you disagree with an item on this, then you should say, I don't like the whereas number three, number five. We'll get rid of that. We'll move on to proclaim. If you like parts blind, but we are working on this individual proclamation. And I certainly appreciate your input to try to educate all the commissioners. But at this point, we're just trying to get through this item. And if you don't like something, we'll remove it. We'll move on to the next one, remove what you don't like there and, and go through. And if your points are valid, then we will certainly not vote in for the proclamation or vote for the proclamation. That's my point for this item.
Well, I disagree with you, but I will allow you to, to handle it your way.
If I may, Mr. Chair. Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record. So we can certainly take a look at doing an agenda item on how the board would like to see proclamations and resolutions or that, that's something that, and which types we would, or the board is interested in entertaining. We can certainly do that. I would like to point out that this particular proclamation came from, or at least the form of it came from the National NACO. It's part of the Mental Health Awareness Month. So you know, we filled in some stuff for Lyon County, but that's where, where this came from. There's another one. I mean, it's pretty typical that different organizations will submit stuff. So we're getting a little bit off topic on, on that, but that's something that I suggest that we could certainly take a look at in the future.
Did you have any corrections to this proclamation that you'd like to make so we can cut and slash or add?
I'm not going to mess with this one. I just bring in what, what I, I agree with the proclaim part, and that's the most important part.
Okay. Then we will move on. The commissioner comments, public comments.
Make sure she has a presentation.
Shala has presentation. Oh.
I'm going to keep this brief. Shala Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services for the Record. With any proclamation that I bring forward, I always bring a presentation for you guys to understand where our department and where our county stands on the issue. So mental health awareness is the month of May, and it is the, the month that we recognize within human services as far as being a critical issue within our community. I want to start off with the term behavioral health. So mental health, behavioral health, they're one and the same. If you look at the National Institute on Mental Health, it lists substance use disorder under that umbrella. Behavioral health is another umbrella term that has been coined in attempts to bring them together because substance use and mental health are frequently co-involving, as you can see from the national statistics. And of course, they are mostly national statistics. Unfortunately, it's very difficult to get local level data. I will show you a couple of data sets, and I am working on trying to bring some more specific data sets to you as on our next quarter help. But it takes working with some of these partners that gather this data to try to make it more granular. And then it becomes an issue of not identifying specific communities, schools, or individuals within those data sets because we have smaller communities that are broken down. So it ends up with some of those type of concerns and issues. But behavioral health is mental health and substance use, and they are co-involving. You can't treat substance use without treating the underlying mental health disorder. And frequently, individuals suffering from severe mental illness use illicit substances to self-medicate. It's unfortunate, but the prescriptions available for those suffering from severe mental illness frequently have severe side effects and many times. severe side effects and many times those are permanent. And they're costly and it's difficult to keep up on appointments and all of those things. So unfortunately they turn to self-medicating with illicit substances. And so they are cooccurring and it's important that we talk about both when we talk about mental health. It's important to us as a county because it comes down to our bottom dollar. Not only do we care deeply about our community members and our constituents and having safe neighborhoods and healthy neighborhoods. But the number one pay source for these services is typically Medicaid. And we pay a significant chunk of money for the federal share on Medicaid. As you also see, it is a significant portion of our jail populations are suffering from mental illness. And if we can aid those with mental illness, we can keep them out of our jails and save those for the truly criminal. And all of these are very expensive to counties. Mental health is one of those sticky, complicated, complex issues that has many confounding factors. It's a bit of genetics and a bit of environment. And it's different for every single individual and it knows no socioeconomic status. While financial stress is certainly a factor as to what can swing somebody from having generalized anxiety to having severe anxiety or a natural disaster can swing someone from being okay with their depression to suffering severe depression. We all saw what COVID-19 did to our behavioral health within the communities. Um, it's one of those things that has so many confounding factors and it's unique to every individual. So there's no cookie cutter response. It typically looks more like this than that nice puzzle piece. I could be here with you guys all day long, talking about different statistics and data. I'm just going to point out two data sets. And again, I'm going to be working on bringing some more specific local data for us here in Lyon at our next Board of Health. The northern region, so that's Person City, Churchill, Douglas, Lyon and Story are grouped together within the most recent epidemiology report. And that shows the suicide rates for those counties grouped together being at an all time high of seventy-five for the year of 2021. You can see that suicide is significantly increasing. And that is a huge concern for the health of our communities. And perhaps could be related to the COVID-19 pandemic with the seventy-five being in 2021. This next two pieces of a very huge survey that looks at a variety of different topics is our youth risk behaviors. This is conducted nationally here in the state of Nevada. It's done by UNR. These numbers we are lumped together with Mineral County and Story County. So it's safe to say that the significant number of that population is our students. But as you can see from 2019, perhaps a pre-COVID snapshot, eight percent of our youth self-identified as having attempted suicide in the last 12 months. Where in 2021, in the thick of that COVID-19 pandemic, we jumped to eleven percent. Zero percent would be the ideal, but eleven percent and increasing is certainly not the direction we want to be going. Felt sad or hopeless for more than two weeks in the last 12 months. That's a major indicator for severe depressive disorder. And that jumped more than 10 percentage points. So that is perhaps two steps before that suicide attempt. And that's really where we want to be is in that preventative factor. Uh, and doing everything we can to get to individuals before it becomes a stage four mental illness. We do have resources within Lyon County. We are blessed to have amazing group of individuals that work diligently towards the mental health within our community and across the lifespan. Uh, within Lyon County Human Services, we have our most partnership with law enforcement, our Sheriff's Department. Where we have a licensed clinical social worker who goes out with a deputy at the Public Behavior Health Peace Officer, trained in crisis intervention training. Um, and their goal is to prevent individuals from going into our jails and our emergency rooms. Stabilize the crisis, keep them in their community and get them connected to long-term resources. We have our forensic assessment services triage team. I think I have Shelby in the room with me this morning. Up in Winona, our licensed clinical social worker also popped in. Um, the FAST team is that team that's working on looking at individuals in the jail with mental health, substance use that's cooccurring along with primogenetic risk factors. And help them get connected to services upon release to keep them from coming back. And then we also recently released our system of care program within the last year and a half. That's a partnership with Community Chest for our youth. Those youth experiencing those significant behavioral health issues, we get referrals from all over the place, juvenile probation. Um, school districts are our major referring sources. We do the assessment, identify their level of care and if necessary, and they hit that marker, they go to Community Chest for multi-dimensional family therapy. You can't help our youth with mental health without helping the whole family because it certainly impacts everybody involved. Healthy Communities Coalition is an amazing partner. They provide the funding for our safe school professionals and the social workers within our school districts. Uh, they are working on trying to make that countywide. There are safe school professionals in every school, but there is not social workers in every school. So they are really working diligently on that. Rural Nevada Counseling is our certified community behavioral health center. It's a mouthful. A CCBHC is what they call them. They're a one-stop shop. Don't turn anybody away. They have locations in Silver Springs, Dayton, Fernley and Earrington. And they help with all cooccurring disorders and conserve the lifespan. Vitality Unlimited is another one of those CCBHCs, but they are only located in Dayton and have not hit their full service array just yet. Statewide, there's also some services that our state has implemented such as nine eight eight. That was that federal requirement to have a crisis call line. So instead of calling nine one one, when you're experiencing a severe mental health crisis, you call nine eight eight. They'll get you connected to resources. There's also the mobile crisis response team, which is a youth response. Here in Lyon, the state does not have an in-person response to that. That is a phone line only. They will de-escalate. They will connect to resources, but they will not be sending somebody out to you in person. Rural clinics has transitioned to this care team where it's mainly a telephonic, uh, telehealth type of scenario. Although rural clinic still has locations here, they will most likely set you up with telehealth in office. And then NAMI Western Nevada, that's a regional resource. Um, they probably should be like toeing the line between local and statewide. They're a fabulous partner, deeply invested in caring for Lyon County community members. They have a warm line where folks can call. They also do calls out for individuals that have attempted suicide or are contemplating suicide. They'll do regular checks on folks and they'll schedule calls to call and check on them as well as being available for a call in and they have a team text line. And we don't do any of this without partnerships. All of those folks on the previous screen are partners. But we also have significant partnerships with our Sheriff's Department. We cannot do this without them. They are fifty percent of the work and highly critical to our success. Along with the school district, allowing these services to be available within the school district. We have one of the most flexible school districts when it comes to allowing services within the schools. And trying to be innovative and how we can bring mental health services to the student as opposed to having to take the student out of class and take them somewhere else. Which is pretty critical for their success and their education. And Lyon County Juvenile Probation, they are such an advocate and a forerunner in how we can divert and deflect youth out of the system and get them the help they need sooner. And lastly, I just want to leave you guys with how we advocate. So we have several pending grant applications, one of which is one of those federal appropriations for us to bring a youth response in person in partnership with that state program. So that way we do have somebody that can go to the school, that can go to the home and be there in person with the family while they're in crisis. Best practice is to have that response be within three hours of the call. Uh, we're constantly working on program innovation such as that system of care. You guys recently approved through our opioid funding, the hiring of a behavioral health coordinator, which has helped us implement universal screening within the human services department, which allows us to triage and assess individuals and get them to the right level of care faster. Tracking current legislation, there is still some live legislation out there in regards to increasing Medicaid reimbursement. Helping bring workforce here to Nevada. That is a critical issue when it comes to mental health. If we are lacking the workforce, you can throw all the money at it in the world, but if you don't have the professionals here to provide the service, we're not going to get very far. So there's some legislation, uh, working on that. There's also some legislation working on additional oversight to not only our youth facilities, but also to our uh, freestanding providers through authorities and other things. So there's still some live legislation out there which we work on and partner with other boards and bodies to help give our inputs. And then community education campaigns. Right now we have our unmasking mental health uh, displays up throughout the county. Our Adult Services Division Manager Heather Benson is extreme advocate for mental health and helped put together that campaign last year and this year. They're pretty interesting. Individuals have created these masks to identify what their mental health looks like and what it means to them. And they're on display off throughout the county with different partners as well. With that, I am open to questions. I also want to highlight that navigating these systems can be very complicated and difficult. And as the human services department, we are here to help individuals navigate those systems. So you can do referrals online. You can always give us a call. You can email us at lchs@lyon-county.org. And we will assign a case manager who will work with that individual to get them connected to the right level of care.
Commissioners, questions, comments?
Commissioner Jacobson. Thank you, Chairman Hocken. Um, thank you, Ms. Holmes. I, I understand that some of these figures are national, some are state. What, um, in this proclamation, I, I mean, I see there's some with youth, but uh, was there any data with the ACES and some of that work that?
Yeah, YRBS, that Youth Risk Behavioral Surveillance Survey, YRBS. Um, the 2021 data does touch on the ACES and that's 10 different bullet points. Um, overall, it has shown a jump. Um, they're saying right now, um, UNR is recommending not doing a comparison from 2019 to 2021 because they've changed the way some of those questions are asked, which makes it hard to really identify that. But that is one of those presentations I'm working with the individual at UNR who compiles that data to come back to our next behavioral health um, or Board of Health and do a full presentation on Lyon County specific. The published report at UNR's website lumps us together with Mineral and Story County. So, um, she's working on teasing out just Lyon County and, um, bringing that to you guys at our next Board of Health.
Thank you.
Commissioner Keller.
First of all, I would thank you for the presentation. It was fantastic. I think it brought into exactly what I was trying to say is that this is important to us and you made it very clear how this is so important to our county. And I just wish that our proclamation could be more impactful, better for you and better for us and for our citizens. So, but I agree with everything you did and thank you for the presentation. I wish we could put that on the resolution, but thank you.
Commissioner Hendricks.
No comment. Thank you for all that you do.
Thanks.
Commissioner Harrison.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes. Thank you for your, your team. You guys do amazing work throughout the county. And it takes special people to do this kind of jobs that you guys do. So thank you very much.
And I did thank you in private after we terminated the last meeting. Uh, but I did want to make a public, uh, comment and thank you for your help. Couple of weeks ago, the member, her family in my district, when I called on Friday. Uh, you met, I think with them on Monday and I did a backup phone call with them on Tuesday and they were just absolutely happy with the help that you had given them. And their family was better off because of that. So a public thank you for the work that you do and absolutely on an individual level and across the county. So thank you very much for that. It certainly helped the family in my district.
Thank you. That was all our, our children's services team. They, they respond very timely. I, the whole department does, but they were fabulous.
Okay. And pass it on, please.
I would certainly will.
All right. So we have the proclamation and I would like to, uh, have an approval, a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, I moved that we approved the proclamation declaring May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Lyon County.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Henderson, motion and second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Too public or no?
Oh, public. Yeah, public comment. I did miss that. I'm sorry. Any public comment? Thank you, sir. No? Okay. So the vote, five zero. Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. Um, we do have the Porter Group, I believe, on Zoom right now. Yes, we do. Okay. So we will move to, um, item six D, or I'm sorry, six C for presentation only and presentation update from the Porter Group on federal lobbying efforts. Sir, go ahead, Mr. Porter.
I think we're having, there we go. Hello. Good morning. Uh, thank you for this opportunity for us to join you today via the technology. Just know, uh, I miss being home and I hope things are going well for everybody. Um, nothing like Nevada and it's a good way to keep the whole, uh, Washington DC in check is, is how important Nevada is and to our team. So thank you very much. Um, I know I have a number of friends that are on the commission as well, but I'll do my best not to embarrass you uh, today. Just want to say thank you to my friends for many years that are on, on the commission. Uh, it's been an honor for us to be a part of your family. And we're excited looking into the balance of this, uh, cycle of, of Congress. As you know, there's a lot going on and what we try to do is, is capsulize for you and your team as much as possible, those things that we, uh, sense that may become a problem in the future or, or may well be a problem today. And I tell you, it's been a real pleasure, you know, working with you and to Andrew, thank you for your professionalism and it was great to see you and commissioners when you were back, uh, here. It seems like a year ago, but I think it was just a couple of months ago. Uh, I highly encourage that, uh, you continue the treks to DC when you can. I know it's very difficult because you're busy, plus you have your own life to take care of and your own businesses. But as time permits, uh, it is very powerful, uh, when you're here in person, have a chance to meet with the delegation. And as you know, we, we, uh, are doing our best every day to make sure the full Nevada delegation is aware of the great things that are happening in Lyon County. But also things that may well be a challenge or things that, uh, that they can assist with. Uh, and you know, on that topic, of course, I think elections never end. And guess what? Elections haven't ended and we're now back into another cycle. Uh, all this is going to impact what's happening at home there in Lyon County and in Nevada. Uh, we have the presidential race that's heating up. Uh, it seems like it's a long ways away, but it really isn't. And that is impacting a whole lot of the decision processes here in DC. But closer to home, uh, you know, Senator Rosen is up for reelection and she will be one of the most targeted members of the US Senate. Uh, nothing, very similar to, uh, Catherine Cortez Masto and in her race of what, last year. Uh, so there's going to be literally millions of dollars that are going to be invested in commercials if they haven't already there, especially for the US Senate race. The, uh, of course, Mr. Amade, who's always been a champion for Lyon, uh, he too uh, is back in cycle and bless our friends in the House of Representatives that have to really do this every two years. But as you, you know, the Senator's Office, both Senators' Offices and Mr. Amade have been really tremendous and Brian's going to get into more details here in a moment. But you have a very solid delegation. You know, what's really nice is that the Nevada delegation, although be very bipartisan, uh, and at times partisan. But when it comes to issues, especially those impacting Lyon County, they, they've really come together, the whole delegation, uh, with leadership, of course, from, from Mr. Amade. I encourage as your time permits and your, your, uh, schedules, make sure, uh, and I know you're doing this, but just a friendly reminder. If you can invite, uh, of course, Mr. Amade to your events as much as you can. But also his staff to make sure, again, I, I know you're already doing this, but I want to remind you, it really does matter. Uh, and the same with this, both Senators' Offices. Uh, invite them to, uh, the staffing there, invite them to, to come to some of the festivities that you may be having. Also, when you have an opportunity, uh, and I go, I know you're all, all really busy because I remember my local government days especially. Uh, if you have time to stop by the district office of Mr. Amade's and certainly our senators, uh, while you're in, in Reno. Uh, make an appointment, go say hi. You don't have to, you don't have to ask for anything. Just really say thanks. We appreciate all you're doing because sometimes the district staff gets left out of, of some of the conversation. Now from a policy perspective, most of that is handled here in DC as you know, right across the street. Uh, and, but the district staff are the ones that, uh, are likely going to help you and your constituents with any of the services that they need from veterans issues, social security amongst others. Um, so again, not to, not to be elaborate, but so important, spend a little bit of time or send a thank you note to the uh, district offices whenever you can. A couple of top line issues and then I'm, I'm A couple of top line issues and then I'm, I'm gonna ask that Brian get into more of the specifics. Uh, we're watching very closely the debt ceiling and what does that mean? In, in the nutshell. Uh, bless the federal government, it basically has spent more on its credit card than uh is able to pay. And they have to determine here very soon. Uh, and there's, it's not an exact science of when we're gonna hit the debt ceiling. Targeted right now is right around the first of June, which is uh what's today. Uh, we're, we're almost there. So uh, assume for a moment that there, there is not a negotiated arrangement by the Congress. Both Houses and the, and the White House. Then uh, they're not able to fund a lot of the federal services. There's essential services that will have to continue, but um. And as in the past, they normally will come together to find a solution. Um. Republicans uh are trying within this mechanism to, to roll back some of the spending of the Biden administration. And certainly uh, the, the president has his own budget that he's, he's focused on. So I'd say that debt ceiling is one of the things that keeps me up at night, I, but my gut says we'll figure it out here pretty soon. Uh, they're really have been negotiating. Uh, and, and you know, not unlike Lion County, uh, who you have to balance your budget, the federal government doesn't. So again, it's an interesting process and having come from local government. I do think that every member of Congress and the Senate should have served on a county commission, a city council or a school board or some other local uh elected position. An, another area and appropriations, we're in that season right now. Uh, we constantly remind the delegation of the, the areas that are priority, priority for you. Uh, I think you're gonna find, if you haven't already, there's been a lot of successes to date. Uh, at, at least in this marathon of getting through the rest of the year. There's different stages and levels of funding, different proj- projects. But you've really done quite well. Um, so we, we do appreciate your confidence and trust in us. Uh. And before I again turn it over to, to Brian, uh, I, I applaud you for all that you're doing and know I'm always here if I can help in any way, so. Uh, Mr. Bates, Brian, unless there's any questions for me, and I'm, I'm gonna be around, so happy to answer any questions later, but. Uh, unless there's any questions for me, I'd like to have Brian kind of get into more of the details.
Good. Any questions? Or questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, guys. Thanks so much for, for having me on. If we could go to the fourth slide, actually, uh, we can start there. Um, so here's the community uh project funding request that we were able to get submitted this year. Uh, these are the ones all submitted by both Senators in the Nevada delegation, as well as one of them was uh done by Congressman Amade. The uh, the Gosh Water Main uh replacement. So I can just go down the list real quick. Uh, basically, the sewer main and manhole rehabilitation project will fund, uh, will provide funding to rehabilitate and replace gravity sewer line and manholes of Dayton. The Smoky Hills Water Main Replacement Project will provide funding to design and replace a water transmission main currently shut down due to catastrophic failures. The Gosh Water Main Project, sorry if I'm mispronouncing that, uh, will provide funding to design and replace a water distribution located on uh Gosh Avenue in Dayton. This project will complete the final phase of the Rose Peak Community Water Main Replacement Project. Uh, next, we have the Sheriff's Office Training Center Project, which will fund the construction of a new law enforcement training center. Uh, the Rest Bite Program for Seniors Project will fund the creation of a rest bite program for older adults and individuals living with disabilities in Lion County. And then um, the mobile expansion or the mobile crisis teams project uh will respond to incidents involving young residents of Lion County. The response team will include credential staffs such as licensed uh clinical social worker, licensed clinical professional counselor and a juvenile probation officer. And then the final two kind of roads projects are the Miller uh realignment project, which will rebuild the intersection of Miller Lane and I Z Lane. To improve public safety. And then the Ramsey Weeks Reconstruction Project will rebuild three point four miles road in Silver Springs to include uh, to improve public safety. Um, so the main thing to note about these requests right now is that they still need to go through the subcommittee processes and the committee processes when they're doing the appropriation bills. Um, as Congressman Porter noted, we are waiting for them to, to kind of come to an agreement with the debt ceiling. So on a lot of the bills, your amendments or your projects are gonna be in, we won't really start hearing about those until they figure out exactly where the. Uh, debt ceiling negotiations are gonna come down to because that will kind of set the, the spending levels for next year. Um, so right now we're tracking those. They've scheduled a few of the other uh appropriation things and I guess their goal is to finish by the end of July. With all of them. So we'll continue to track those. Uh, all the, the various Senators and Congressman Amade both know. Of the priorities for Lion County and will continue to push those. So if we wanted to go to the next. Slide. Um, additionally, we're working on the lands bill. Um, we've already met with Senate and half cost staff on, on the different lands bills, including the potential for a Lion County bill. Uh, essentially how it's working is that. The Senators have put out a series of rules saying they don't want to see individual town bill, uh, lands bills. They want everyone to come to an agreement and do general uh county ones. And so uh, we've been meeting with different stakeholders to go over kind of, you know, where to figure out. The different parcels that can be designated for different purposes and so that everyone ends up getting kind of what they're looking for in the end. Um, those talks are kind of ongoing and I've been working a lot with Andrew. Uh, we've had some good conversations and uh we'll continue, we'll continue doing that. Um, once we're able to identify exactly which parcels we're trying to convey, that's when we'll start working with the B L M. Office in order to, to get technical assistance, actually drawing up the maps and all the technical details to, to turn it into a landfill. Um, as Congressman Porter kind of briefly went over, uh, even the debt ceiling is, is the biggest issue right now in DC that has to be solved. Uh, they're looking at June first, sometime in the first week of June, when the federal government will not be able to pay its bills. Uh, it is something that both the administration and Congress have been meeting on extensively over the last couple of weeks to address. Right now, the negotiation teams have been kind of funneled down more and more to essentially it is Kevin McCarthy's team speaking with the Biden Administration's team. To come to some sort of agreement on the debt ceiling. Um, the main things that they're looking at right now are adding or increasing some sort of work requirements. For um food security programs, so look, I see where those talks end up and possibly energy permitting reform. To make it easier to do some energy permitting on public lands. Uh, yeah, so the, the. Effect is essentially what I was saying. A lot of them have been delayed. Uh, they're doing some of the bills right now that. Uh, they feel secure in how much funding is gonna be in each of those. Um, you know, legislative branch, there's not gonna be much changes. Uh, Homeland Security, MilCon VA and the Agriculture Appropriation Bills uh are all pretty comfortable with where they're at. They know. Where those top line fundings are gonna be because especially the Republicans in the House do not want to decrease stuff like Homeland Security. And they've already figured out exactly what kind of language changes they're gonna try to make in the MilCon VA. You know, as we figure out exactly uh where the debt. Bills end up in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to give you guys a much more detailed outlook on, on how a lot of those bills are looking. Um, some of the other things in the news, Senator Diane, Diane, Diane Feinstein from California just returned. Uh, with there being such a slim majority, the Senate has kind of been stalled for a while. Uh, so they're gonna be ramping up and doing a lot of judicial confirmations. Uh, especially Court of Appeals, those kind of things. Uh, this week is Police Week in DC, so we've seen a lot of police walking around and they're also doing a resolution in the House to support local police. And then uh, the Durham investigation was released, which essentially looked into the FBI's content, conduct around the two thousand and sixteen Trump campaign interruption interference. So you might hear a lot about that in the news as they kind of unwind uh what exactly was going into that. I know House Republicans were holding a hearing today about the FBI and some whistleblowers and stuff like that. So that's just kind of gearing up and turn, and, and time for the presidential elections and. Um, I think we'll be hearing a lot about that, but nothing that would, will directly be affecting uh Lion, I believe. Um, and then kind of looking forward, uh, we'll continue to work on Lion's behalf to ensure that we get as much CPF funding as we can. Whatever programs or language does not end up making it into the final bills, we'll start looking at different federal programs that we can look at to get the funding from those instead. Uh, the CPF is always just kind of the first uh crack at it because that's the easiest to, to get sometimes. Um. And then once we get the, the final details for the Lion County lands bills, uh, we'll go ahead and assist any way that we can, working with B L M or. Any other uh groups that we need to in order to, to help. Get those, those uh projects underway. So happy to answer any questions. I uh, I went over those things a little quickly there, but happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Question, question Henderson.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Not, not a question. I just want to thank you guys for, for all the hard work that you're doing on our behalf. I feel a lot better knowing that Lion County now has representation in DC. And especially that the representation is the Porter Group. So thank you guys for all your hard work and I appreciate the update and I look forward to continuing our relationship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, this, I, I just have a question for John. Uh. You have mentioned when we were back there, you've mentioned that it was uh advantageous for us to be in Washington DC. Uh, not to just come at a certain time, but uh, and I heard you just say it again. So as we go through for the CPF funding and stuff, is there a time that you can coordinate with us? Uh, if we need to bring a Lion County delegation to uh target a certain time when we're putting in for a lot of money and we really need to make an impact. And so. You, it's, it's kind of vague. You, you said that be more often in Washington, but at the same time, we have no clue. So could you uh keep us informed, I guess?
We, we will. Thank you. And it was great to see you, Commissioner. It, it really does matter. And as we're looking now into targeting fall, summer, fall. Uh, and as we see these, these appropriations.
Appropriations.
Uh, moving forward, we'll work and coordinate with your schedules as well. We can pretty much tell you by the week and by the month. What would be a good time. So we'll work with Andrew with some suggested time and. I still remember early on in, in my career, when I was a member of Congress. You know, uh, people would, would say, well, Congressman, we have you in Washington, so I don't need to come. And I would say the same thing, Commissioner, then. Say, I thank you, but we, we're dealing with thousands of items. And there's nothing more important than having to shake hands and spending five or 10 minutes. Creating and, and maintaining a relationship with the member of Congress and of course, the Senate. But we want Lion to be a house or household word and, and the, in the delegation offices. We want them to remember as they're, you know, dealing with tens of thousands of pieces of correspondence. We want them to know you as individuals, uh, and, and by the way, it's very similar to your constituents. So. Thank you for mentioning it. Uh, I believe not in seven trips, believe me. But I think it's, it's really positive to have seven contact points a year. That, that means. Stop by their district office. That means uh, take a picture with a member of Congress at, at a function. Here or in, in, at home there in Lion County. Host out, you know, as much as you can. Again, it just, it just solidifies relationships. Now, you're very well thought of, so we're, again, we're, we're, we're fortunate that you're very well respected. But even if it's a five or 10 minute, although it's not that quick to get here, but even if it's a 10, 15 minute conversation, shake a hand. Knowing that it's that important to you to be here, that will pay off. Specific, you mentioned and, and Brian's mentioning, you know, what's pending right now. Commissioner, we, we'll help you lay out stages and phases on when would be a good, good time to come. Uh, and I would not encourage August, so don't worry. Thank you.
Commissioner Jacobson. Okay, any public comment? Okay, I will thank you for your presentation. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
And since we're at the nine fifteen point, uh, have we heard anything from the Battleborn Youth Challenge Academy?
Mr. Chair, um, I did speak with Mr. Ponder and he sends his regrets, but he ended up double booked today and so he's asking to reschedule.
Okay, thank you very much. So we are now going to, well, I should ask, it is 10 o'clock, somebody need to take a break. No break? Okay, good. We'll move on to seven B. For possible action, prove resolution in support of Nevada wildfire awareness campaign and proclaim May twenty twenty three is Nevada wildfire awareness campaign month. And this year's banner theme, protect our home, prepare for wildfire. Uh, this is a relatively short proclamation in support of Nevada wildfire awareness campaign. Whereas wildfires significantly impacts Nevada's environmental, economic and social well-being. And whereas residents must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper management of vegetation surrounding the home and appropriate home construction and maintenance to resist ignition. And whereas resident need to work together to prepare their homes and communities to survive wildfire and commit to becoming fire adapted and. Whereas residents can save precious time in an evacuation by preparing a go bag and family evacuation plan ahead of time. Therefore, the Lion Board of County Commissioners proclaims the month of May twenty twenty three is Nevada wildfire awareness campaign month. And this year's banner theme is protect our home, prepare for wildfire. As a means for education and a call for residents of Lion County to work together to be ready for wildfire. That is our proclamation for today. I, I kind of started off when I was a volunteer firefighter up in the mountains. Um. I can't tell you how many times I had to go to people's houses and say, you know, you need to clear defensible space. You need to get that firewood away from your home. Uh, we'll come and do an inspection. We'll do this and. People would just kind of go, no, I'm good. Um, but normally when you tell them if you don't have defensible space around your home, the fire department is not gonna come in and risk their lives. We'll have to red X your property. Many times that's when they would go, oh, I guess I better do something. And, and you hate to be that drastic when you're dealing with people, but you know, if you see a hazard, you try to resolve the hazard. And if people aren't willing to do that, then you do have to come down with a club. So I, I really think that uh preparing for wildfire way ahead of time, making sure your home is safe is very, very important. So definitely agree with the proclamation. So moving on to other comments here to uh Commissioner Hendricks, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Okay, Commissioner Harrison.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just also want to emphasize how important it is. To create defensible spaces around your house. I've been involved with um wildfire awareness for a number of years now and. You know, Commissioner Hockaday is absolutely right. When a fire breaks out and firefighters show up in a neighborhood and. There's one house that's got defensible space and there's one house that doesn't. They're gonna put their resources on the ones that have taken, taken care to. Take care of your property and not put firefighters in, in danger. So I, I appreciate this proclamation and support it as well.
Oh, what a commissioner Jacobson.
Um, I just agree with, uh, thank you, Chairman Hockady. I agree with uh you and, and Commissioner Henderson's comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller.
I, I agree with the comments, but I don't agree with the resolution at all. It's written poorly. It's. It's on, I. The proclamation, the therefore that the Lion County Board of Commissioners part that whole little essay at the end, it should just say proclaim that. The Lion County Board of Commissioners. Make the month of May twenty twenty three is Nevada Wildlife Awareness Campaign Month, and this year's banner theme is protect our home. Prepare for wildlife. The other part of it has nothing to do on that line. It's a what, and that's what they're trying to accomplish. So the, the preamble, although whereas, are supposed to answer is why? Why would, so why? Number one, wildlife significantly impacts Nevada's environmental, economic and social well-being. That's the, the good, good uh part. But the and doesn't belong there. And I'll tell you why the and, and because I'm gonna remove every one of them, except for the second to last one. You don't say, we can paint the building red, yellow, blue and green. You don't say red and yellow and blue and green. It's just not formatted right. The second one, whereas residents must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper, that isn't a why. That's a what? That should be another. Resolution. The next one is a what? The next one is a what? It doesn't say why we should proclaim it wildlife month. So there's only one good whereas. There's only one, uh, we should re redo the. The proclamation at the end, and that's all that's needed for this proclamation. The other part isn't necessary. It's just. It's it's confusing.
Yes.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. So this is another one that was actually submitted to us by uh BLM. Jennifer Diamond is uh from BLM is um on the Zoom meeting. I see. I don't know. If she would like to to add anything. Um, so um, but this was one that came from an outside. Entity. So um Commissioner Keller is right, absolutely can um. Modify it in the meeting if you'd like. Um. But I just wanted to point that out that this was a request made to Lyon County to approve the proclamation.
Okay. So. I think the way to proceed on this is we have one in front of us right now. If the commission agrees that we can approve this one, uh. As. Mr. Keller says it may be poorly worded in his opinion. Then uh if we approve it, then it'll go forward as written. If we don't approve it, then we can sit down and start rewriting it. Uh, that's kind of the way I look at it right now. So seven B would be. Uh, basically, can we uh approve the resolution as it's written, approve resolution in support of the Nevada wildfire awareness campaign? Or if we can't and we think it needs to be rewritten, it's not really saying what we want to say, then we can move on with that. So at this point. I'm gonna. Since this was submitted to us from BLM, I will say that we will. Look at that. Uh, I will take some public comment here. See that Commissioner Keller wants to say some other. Input here, so go ahead.
Well, another suggestion that we could do is uh. Vote on the on the resolution part, the. The proclamation part. And that because that. If we agree with that. If we change that, sometimes it changes as where asked. So normally we do the resolution part, and then we would go back to the preamble and modify the preamble if needed.
Well, I I think I'm gonna request a motion to approve it as is, and then if we don't get the votes, then we'll go back and rewrite it. Um. That that is the process that I'd like to see right now. So. Yes.
Uh, thank you, sir. Um. I think we're. Uh, I appreciate BLM's work on this and and thinking to send it and um it seemed like. We're wanting to maybe change. The format and our expectations. Without giving that to our. People that are. Supplying us with the information. I, if if we need to do a workshop or not a workshop, but an agenda item and and clean up what our expectations are for this. Um, and and maybe develop a fo- format. Um. I'm all for it, but I I don't think. I I don't think we're putting the cart in front of the horse here today is is the correct um. Way to go about that. So with that, I'd like to make a motion um that we approve. Um. I get this wording, right? Um. That we approve uh the resolution um regarding Nevada recognizing Nevada wildfire awareness campaign. And proclaim May two thousand twenty three as Nevada Wildlife Awareness Campaign Month.
Wildfire awareness? Wildfire.
Wildfire Awareness Month, yes.
Oh, okay.
I'll second that.
It's got a motion by Commissioner Jacobson and second by Commissioner Henderson to approve the resolution. So do, and I do want to have public comment before we take an action on this. Anybody else have a public comment? We do have uh Amanda Bernand hand is up.
Good morning, Amanda Bernand. Um, I'm of course fully in full support of this um with all the the. Water this year, cheat grass is very bad this year, which is a flying flashy fuel, which will carry a fire fast. So the more people can do around their homes for defensible space, the better the chance of surviving a wildland fire. Uh, one of my concerns, though, is we proclaim this as wildfire awareness month, but. It would be nice if there could be, there are elderly people and financially strapped people that cannot afford to treat the weeds on their property is. I don't know, maybe getting information about out about how the fire department may be able to help those individuals and also the. Consequences of not having defensible space. I've seen it. I fought wildland fire for thirty years. I've seen the consequences of it. And like they said. The person with a defensible space, that's where the firefighters are going to go, but not everybody has the. Financial or physical ability, especially when they have large acreage property. So maybe. I'm not sure exactly what it would be, but somehow assist those people that need assistance so that their home would survive a wildland fire. And then the other thing would be in the wooey. Is all this building that's going on is require some kind of defensible space in the HOA and also. Some kind of building materials that may be more fire resistant, so that if a subdivision catches on fire. Those people may have a better chance of living and the fire wouldn't spread. Thank you.
And thank you. And and just for information, wooey is wildland urban interface for the acronym. Um. Any other public comment? Okay, so I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so we have four. I want to pose. And we have horses. Okay, moving on to seven C for possible actions after resolution declaring May as motorcycle safety awareness month in Lyon County, and I see in recognition, we have a. Motorcycle jacket on one of the commissioners.
I got to wear it twice this year.
And 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 because this is yours, would you like to read it, sir?
Be happy to.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A resolution of the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners proclaiming May twenty twenty three is motorcycle safety awareness month. Whereas motorcycle ri- riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of people across Nevada. And whereas motorcycles are a common and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and causes less wear on the roads in Lyon County. And whereas Lyon County is home to many miles of motorcycle friendly roads that offer motorcyclists scenic rides throughout the county. And whereas the number of motorcycles increased during the more. Climate times of the year. And whereas it is vital that drivers of all vehicles be aware of and be on the watch for motorcycles. And whereas unaware and distracted drivers of other vehicles present a grave danger to motorcyclists. And whereas motorcyclists contribute to the economic well-being of the communities through which they ride. By buying gasoline and dining at local residents. Now, therefore be it resolved that Lyon County Board of County Commissioners proclaims May twenty twenty three. As motorcycle safety awareness month, and therefore be it further resolved that Lyon County Board of County Commissioners encourages all motorists. To be aware of motorcyclists and to practice safe driving habits when motorcycles were present. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, comments from commissioners on the resolution here?
Let me.
Go ahead.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is obviously um. Im- important and personal to me. Um, I I ride motorcycles. It is very important that. That both motorcyclists and people driving other vehicles pay attention. You know, I shake my head when I see people on motorcycles, you know, right, riding a motorcycle. With sandals, shorts, and a t-shirt on. It's just stupid. You you don't do that. It said the motorcycles themselves have to take. Responsibility for their for their safety and be on the watch out, but also, you know, cars don't see motorcycles. So one thing I just want to throw out there, if you got kids. Teach your kids to spot motorcycles when you're driving. You know, count motorcycles. How many can you find on a trip? Because that is going to get that in their brain. So when they get older and they start driving, they're already in the process or how or in the habit of watching out for motorcycles. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. I'll stop there.
That's a very good idea. Uh, Commissioner Hendricks.
Um, I too have ridden forever and um believe safety is an issue, but I also do agree with Commissioner Keller Keller. That we really need to clean up the process of how we write these proclamations.
Um, Commissioner Jacobson.
Side comment. I know my ticker works because the other day I'm driving along mine and my own business and a motorcyclist passed me probably going a hundred, hundred and ten and scared the bejeebers out of me. So I would just like to offer up that um they've uh motorcyclists, I agree, do have uh some stake in their safety as well. Um, but I am on the lookout for motorcycles, so and their riders, obviously.
Commissioner Keller.
So. Again, the. The resolved is is good. I like both resolved. But there's three whereas that I'd like to be uh discussed, removed. That I can see. And I I agree with uh Commissioner Henderson uh when he started off that he's talked talked about the motorcycle rider. Uh motorcycle uh awareness month nationally. Is about the rider, not about the uh other people looking out for the motorcyclist. Uh. The single incident of death for. Motorcycle riders, the highest one. Is not other cars or anything. It's DUIs or going under uh some kind of uh drug. That's the biggest impact to their death. That's not stated anywhere in here. They die four times more, four to one, or accidents are a night. Why isn't that in here? Uh. To me, if it's a strong. Thing that should be brought before Lyon County, I want to have the sheriff's input of how many people, how how impactful is this? Is this the resolution we need at the time? But another thing. Then another problem is that motorcyclists don't get trained. And this is a problem in Lyon County, because a lot of people drive without a license. They drive their motorcycles around, so they never go through the training of how to correctly ride a motorcycle. How to be aware, how to be aggressive. That isn't in here. That should have been in here. Uh, whereas motorcycle, I'll go to the second whereas, whereas motorcycles are common economic means of transportation that reduce fuel consumption unless we're on the roads in Lyon County. Uh. I didn't want to open it up to to the fact, because sometimes whereas put put you into the other. It opens up a question. Uh. Motorcycles also pollute more than any other vehicle. So I didn't want the.
Do you have facts for that?
Yeah, gentlemen, this is.
Yes, I do.
Inappropriate.
Uh. Lyon County is home to many miles of motorcycle friendly roads that offer motorcyclists scenic rides throughout the county. Well, at the same time, that statement's being said, I'm a- addressing the end dot saying we have to clean up our roads because they're not safe. We have passing zones now that we can just drive them from. From Silver Springs to here, the road needs to be improved so much. Now, I'm saying that they're great for friendly motorcycle riding. That's a, that's contradictory to what what I'm trying to accomplish. Uh, and then the whereas motorcycles contribute to the economic well-being of the communities throughout which they ride by buying gasoline and dining at restaurants. That's not exclusive to motorcyclists. Everybody that drives a vehicle does that. So then why is that there? That doesn't bring anything to the point. So those three whereas, I would like like them removed and then I could uh support the rest of the resolution.
I will make a comment here. The very beginning of your discussion on instructing us how to write this, you said that the resolutions. In many cases are exactly what people want to say. This is exactly what Commissioner Henderson wants to say in his resolution. Whether it meets with your specifications does not matter. As a commissioner, you may vote it, you may vote it down or not. That's your choice. You may vote it down or not.
And I also have the right as a commissioner to debate it. And to bring clarity to everybody else on the board. And that's exactly what I did.
But it is.
It isn't up to you to, it isn't up to you to train me. Thank you.
Then it's not up to you to train me, sir. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
We're moving right along here, Commissioner Henderson.
I do just like to make a comment. This is the exact, just about the exact same resolution this board passed last year.
Uh, Commissioner. I will uh talk to uh. The county manager.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record. So I will take ownership of this one. Um, and the the um. I did take a look at what we have done in the past. Um, and so we did end up using the same resolution that uh we have passed from the past. I will pay closer attention to that in the future. Um, and we will work to schedule an agenda item to. Um. To provide some clarification as to what types of resolutions the board wants to see and um. How that, how they should look in the future.
Okay, and I have final word on this, which is basically that. Uh, when I read through the resolution and having been a squadron motorcycle safety officer in California for my squadron. And as a fellow motorcycle rider back then. Reading through this, it had a lot of good input. What we should look for. How you make motorcycle riding more more safe. It's not just what the motorcyclist does, it is what other people do. And so we all need to look at this and say, can I drive more safely on the road with motorcyclists? And I felt that a lot of these points were very valid. And as I said, having read or ridden. For the first thirty years of my motors motorcycle riding adventure. So that's kind of why I thought it made a lot of sense, but uh everybody has their opinions and that's fine. Uh, we will discuss writing these things later at an agenda item to be determined in the future. So moving right along, um, we are going to look at approving this. And those who don't want to approve it can vote nay, and if we get enough nays, we'll sit down and rewrite it. So looking for a motion to approve. Public comment? Any public comment? Ah, okay, we have. And you know, to go ahead and. State your name for the record and write it down on the piece of paper.
Mary Ann Secheck, um, I'm a resident of Stagecoach. And I'd like to um just uh. Speak about not specifically this. Um, proclamation, but the three that we have called. Listen to you um deal with. And the timing, um. Proclamations, and I've noticed this in the past. Um, that the that the uh board members sign. Um. I hope is is, I hope the um. The purpose is for the county, not for individual opinions. Um, and I I think that should not be something that you discuss here. Um, the way you have, but it back to timing. Um. Proclamations are always done, for instance, this is the what, the seventeenth of May? What? How does the county know? How do the people of the county know? That you're concerned about these things that you're getting, doing a proclamation in the middle of the month? Um, and that's not just this year. Times in the past, is there any way that you can do? Prepare the proclamations prior to the month that you're. Saying that it's going to be the month of so that the people of the county can be aware of that, and if they're interested in. In supporting it, they can do it in in their own various ways. This way, um, half, probably ninety percent of the county is not going to know. That this is um. These proclamations are saying this is the month of. Because they're not going to get the information until the agenda or the minutes come out and it's going to be gone. So I I think in order for you to um. To make these proclamations important for the county. That you should um look at the timing. Not only would that give the people an opportunity to let you know how they feel about it. Um, going forward or whether they support it or not, but um. It would give. The county time to make any um. Adjustments without. Um. Having conflict at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Secheck. Uh, I will make one announcement that this was supposed to be read. Uh, last meeting, but we had to cancel the meeting, so.
But it was still there, right? It it was not, I don't think it was timely, even if you had done it at the beginning.
No, that's why I say I agree. I agree that these, if we're going to proclaim it, should be prior to the month that proclamation. Uh, makes sense. Um, but also these are throughout the. You know, it's not just that month. So we kind of look at this and say, everybody, please. Be aware of these things in the future, uh, starting with it's with this one, starting with the motorcycle. Riding season, basically. So um, I just was kind of updating on the date that we were going to do this. was kind of updating on the date that we were going to do this two weeks ago. But thank you. You're a very, very valid point. Thank you. Okay, any other public comment, online, offline, in the room? Um, okay, another comment from Commissioner.
If you're ready, I'll make a motion.
Oh, okay. Go ahead and make a motion.
Mister Chair, I move that we adopt a resolution declaring May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in Lyon County.
Second. Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
I could have supported a bit with the resolution part, but no, because of the way it's written.
So we have four oh.
Four one.
Or I'm sorry, four one. Yeah, get my math right here eventually.
It's hard to add.
Yeah, it's hard to add. It's hard to add up to five on my hand here. Uh
Can we take a quick break?
We can take a break, certainly. Take, let's take a five minute break. It's ten thirty, be back at ten thirty-five ish. Okay. Commissioner Hendricks. It's ten thirty. We're going to go and call the meeting back to order. Uh we have a request for a a little bit of an agenda change here so that we can get the sheriff off to his next meeting. So we're going to go ahead and and just do item nine, elected officials for the sheriff. The sheriff would like to come forward. And that way he can go back to work.
Uh good morning, Lyon County Sheriff Brad Pope for the record. I was just going to tell you nothing to report, so. He didn't move that for me, but I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have an academy graduation at one o'clock. Uh we have one deputy graduating from uh Nevada Post Academy, Carson City. Uh so have to go get changed into the class of uniform and head up there. So I appreciate you letting me go now. Um since we missed last meeting or was canceled, um some of the reports we honored three of our deputies with the Hoff uh Survival Award uh Reno on May fifth. Uh that's an award where you're put in a life threatening situation and you act with valor. So three deputies, two from Furley and one from Smith Valley were honored with those awards. Uh we're very proud of their service. Um obviously, uh one of those deputies was Brian Carl, who has issued the meritorious service award here. Uh and his partner Deputy May, who saved his life, Deputy May. Also acted courageously and was uh issued that award. Deputy Ziggan Fuss from Smith Valley uh was issued that award uh from an event that took place last year as well. So very proud of those guys. Conducted two town halls uh since the last time we've had a meeting. One was in Yurington, one was in Dayton. Uh pretty well attended, uh got more information out to the community. Uh we're still working on a a method to distribute information. Um so more people can attend those town halls. Uh several people reached out, said that they were not aware. Uh even though we shared them on social media, pump flyers, etc., but that's also where uh like our new app coming up, the Sheriff's App will help disseminate that information to people who don't have social media. Um things are going, moving right along. Uh summer weather is coming. Uh calls for service are increasing. So we're trying to get the uh people we have on training out a lot faster. We currently have nine deputies on training, on field training. Uh several are slotted to come out this week. Uh we're now up to four who are already category category one certified. They'll be coming out a lot sooner, probably by the end of June. Uh the ones coming out of the academy today will fill in in Dayton. So we should be bolstering our numbers fairly quickly. We do have an academy in July that will send three of those uh new deputies, at least three, maybe five to the academy. Uh but we'll still have four to five ones that aren't cat one working the streets. So our our numbers will be bolstered for the summer. And then we'll look at the winter months when things start slowing down again, sending at least five to the next academy. So we're just trying to keep the numbers going. Our SROs will be out of the schools uh for the three months during the summer, so they'll be able to add to our patrol numbers and just looking at adding and uh making better service for the for the community. So uh I just I would miss the week. I was out of out of the country. I'm still jet lagged. It's a lot of travel time uh on Sunday, so that's all I got. It's for record. Again, I appreciate you guys letting me go.
Any questions, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh thank you, Mister Chair. Not not a question, but I did enjoy your vacation pictures as you posted them. So thank you. It's like you guys had a good time.
All right. Was not relaxing at all. I got tired of this. Just a lot of walking, so.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Just thank all you uh your crew and and yourself. Good job and we appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you for the continued good work and the great updates and presence throughout the county.
Thank you.
Commissioner Keller. Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate Commander Powell coming to the advisory board meetings, and I'm sure that you've had representation at the other advisory board meetings. I do appreciate you getting out and doing that. Um one note of business, it's a little strange looking on the west of three thirty-nine. There's a trailer sitting out there uh about about halfway between here and Wilson Canyon, just kind of sitting out there by itself, no vehicle hooked up to it. I don't know whether it's just been dumped out there or if someone's going to be trying to live out there. Um but yeah, it's just it's a trailer sitting there this morning.
So like Commander Powell, I know what it is.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, Commander Powell, for the record, that's the sheep herder. So they
Okay.
They're pushing sheep in that area. Um we're going to continue seeing them all over.
Yep.
Um they were on uh two oh eight going towards um uh like basically TRE a couple of weeks ago, and and they're just moving them all around, so.
Yeah, they've been all over my property, so that's good. They're eating a lot of weeds and that'll
Yeah.
The fire, yeah, fire prevention. I just didn't recognize that trailer sitting out there.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate the input. Thank you very much.
Yeah, it was across the street from my house about a month ago, so.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Guys, take care. Be safe. Thank you.
Uh any other elected officials while we're on this? Did we have any others on Zoom? Maybe we can roll back to eight. Don't don't see anybody else that wants to get up and talk as an elected official. So we'll go ahead and go back to item eight, Commissioner comments and county manager report. So I'll start with Commissioner Hendricks.
Um yeah, after our last canceled meeting, uh was able to attend the Sutro Tunnel event and they put on a great event there. Um attended the Comstock Historical District Board Meeting and last night attended the Carson Water Subconservancy District Board Meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh thank you, Mister Chair. Just a couple of things. Um attended the Western Interstate Region and the National NACO Public Lands Committee Monthly Call. And also the NACO Board of Directors Meeting. Uh a couple of things I want to report on there. The the NACO Board of Directors adopted a resolution uh similar to the one we adopted in support of the historic route preservations or the RS two four seven seven roads. Lost my train of thought. I'm sorry. There was something else I wanted to talk about. Anyway, um obviously still watching the legislature as well. And uh and uh that's that's getting interesting. I think you might have noticed the governor issued his first detos yesterday. Um also attended the camp of the meeting where they uh adopted a similar resolu- resolution in in support of motorcycle safety awareness month. And that's all I have, Mister Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Keller.
Well, I attended uh the NACO Board Meeting along with the other committee meetings that that there weren't that they had. Uh Silver Springs Advisory Board, the Sutro Event, did go on the Carson uh Water Subconservancy story meeting, but they also had a uh field trip ahead of time. And so I got to go uh look at the upper reaches of the Carson River in Douglas where they had some failures and stuff. And I kind of looked back at uh the same failures that we've had around our our county throughout the county and it most of it is uh sins of the past or somebody got away with something because someone didn't tell them that they couldn't do it and but a covert where they shouldn't have or diverted water in a different direction. So it it happens to all the counties, but it was good just to tour that to see what the upper reaches of uh Carson River look like. That's all I got.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Oh, thank you, Chairman. How could I appreciate it? Um just a few things, uh want to thank uh the Mister Haskin and the Burnley Mayor and and his staff at a a nice meeting and uh I just want to thank him for coming up to Furley and spend some time. Attended the debt management meeting. Um and I just want to give a shout out to Mister Foley. I do appreciate how you keep us out of debt, big guy. Um we're not mortgaging their bar, doing stuff for vehicles and whatnot. And finally, um therefore be it resolved that uh I greatly appreciate North Lion Fire, uh Chief Nichols and his staff, the Sheriff Pope and Highway Patrol. Um whenever they're available and we have kids going to state tournament, they for their kind of final recognition of their hard work, dedication and commitment, they get a escort out of town. I don't know if that happens in other areas. Um but it means a lot to the kids um community and they do a great job of escorting the bus or the if it's a smaller team or contingency, the suburban or whatever they're taking. Um they escort them out of town and I always video it and send it to friends that don't live in Lyon County. And they think it's unbelievably great hometown, support, community feel. And uh so I just want to give those three entities a big shout out. It is cool when when they're led out of town behind lights flaring, kids hanging out the windows, being kids waving and uh so thank you to those guys. That is all I have, Chairman Hockenbeck.
I was very impressed with the Sutro Tunnel tour. Very knowledgeable individuals there discussing things with us and I thought it was an outstanding activity. People should go up there and see what the uh attraction is if they haven't been there before. It's my first trip up there, so I was very, very impressed. Uh we'll move on to county manager report.
Thank you, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record. Um so the I don't want to, I mean, I'm going to talk about this a little bit at the emergency meeting that we're going to have at eleven thirty, but um you know, one of the biggest things that's taken up a lot of time right now, and we will continue to take up a lot of time and um we want to make sure folks are aware is the flooding that um is expected along the Walker River. Pretty much beginning uh this weekend and it will continue for a while. You may remember we had a town hall meeting a few weeks, a few weeks back. Um that the worst case scenario from that town hall meeting is now the forecast. So um we are expecting, you know, pretty high flows on the on the Walker River. It's expected to be about three thousand CFS um by Sunday, Monday and about thirty-five hundred uh by about Wednesday. That's the National River Forecast Center's prediction. Um Walker River Irrigation District is putting that number at uh forty-two hundred sometime in the next few weeks for a peak. So I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. And again, I will talk about that more at the emergency meeting. Um there's some information near uh packet for that meeting. Um we, I do want to make the public and the board aware that we do plan to close Miller Lane at some point. I know I've been saying that throughout the um spring. So we are assessing that and um probably sometime early next week. So I do want to make the public aware of that. Um we had thought about doing it as early as today. However, um you know, it's we're just assessing the situation and it's not quite oriented yet, but so we will um we will be taking a look at that. Also, um I wanted to make the board aware and just remind staff that right now is open enrollment, so you do need to go in and sign up for your um health benefits. So just want to make sure that everyone does that. That is due tomorrow. So um that's really important. And then finally, um I wanted to share some good news. Um I've got a couple of letters from members of the public over the last week. Um just complimenting our team here, and so I want to recognize our staff and um read these letters out loud. So this first one is from Cassandra Kui. Um she's the president of the Silver Silverada Little League. And here's what she had to say. She said, good morning, Judge. And I'm not sure you're aware, but Judge is one of our staff members um for the uh in parks, so. Um says, good morning, Judge. I just want to let you know that Silverada hosted a mini tournament on the big Mark Twain Field this weekend and the field looked beautiful. We got so many compliments from parents and coaches, both from Dayton and out of town, remarking how fantastic the grass looked, etc. One coach in particular was especially impressed and said that they were the nicest fields that they had played on all season. Another parent said that they could tell how much care went into the fields by the way they were mowed with all the precise lines in the outfield and that they were used to having their fields just mass mowed. We heard this over and over all day, and I couldn't agree more. We have been to other fields throughout this season and ours are by far the most maintained and well prepared for. We have hosted teams on the Silverada Fields and every week we get the same feedback, how great the fields look, how they wish they had such nice fields, etc. I also want to say how very much I appreciate Scott working so hard to get the water turned back on to the farm field after the the valve break. His solution works great, maybe even better than a quick turn. So thank you. I just want to let you know how grateful we are for all your hard work and efforts and making beautiful parks that we can be proud to play and host our teams. With much gratitude. Oh, this your work um makes a huge difference to us with much gratitude presented. And so we did take over the maintenance of those fields internally, so I do want to shout out, extend a shout out to our team there. Um that's really great. And then this letter, um on a similar note, is from Julie Minor Workman, and it says, thank you so much for keeping the cemetery in such great shape. But look so respectable, honoring all those who have passed. Memorial to so many lives. As I was preparing our family plots for spring and summer and Memorial Day, I realized how easy it is to take for granted that the cemetery is so neat and weed free. As I went around visiting other friends and family plots, I remember growing up years and adult times recently where days and hours were spent weeding. And this year, super weeds growing from all of our wonderful moisture, but no weeds in our Dayton Cemetery. Thanks to all of you who are keeping this a priority and all the hours and days you spend in keeping it looking so good. So good, in fact, that I almost forgot to notice. So I just wanted to share that with the board. Any
Thank you. Questions? Uh Commissioner Keller.
I just, there was a couple of things because we missed the last meeting that I didn't uh tell anybody about, and I just looked on my my notes and the uh we did uh attend the N N D A meeting, me and Andrew did. Uh so we're working on our economic development and stuff, but I think they're trying to recruit him to the executive board back there. So they were talking about him, especially after he left. Also, uh I attended then in intergovernmental executive committee. That's the one out of the expansion at the Naval Base in Fallon. And in the past, uh we haven't had as much representation as we wanted on there, but it's good to see that J.J. Kokachia out of uh Eureka is now the chair of that uh board, that committee, I mean, and uh Buzz Charman is the vice chair. So we've we're going to have a lot of rural uh representation there.
Any questions for the county manager?
Just comment.
Comments?
Uh thank you, Mister Chair. Please pass on my appreciation to the to your employees. We have the best county staff in the state and uh want to make sure they know that.
Absolutely, will do.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Public comments? Public comments? Zoomer? No Zoom? Okay. So then we will move on from that. And we already got through the elected official reports. So we're going to go to the appointed official reports. And it looks like uh Mr. Carriola is coming up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Lewis Carriola, Community Development Director. Uh, I'll try and be succinct this morning. Um, one update regarding staff. As a result of the critical labor shortage uh that you approved, I'm happy to report that Mr. Gail Luke has joined our building department as a building inspector, uh, joining now. Gene Stewart, who works up in in the Dayton office. Uh, we now have two seasoned uh building inspectors. Uh, so we've essentially been able to bring them in-house uh with an almost seamless transition uh for the development community and for the public. Uh, they've been a great uh help to me as well uh in my transition to this new post. Uh, two updates regarding stormwater uh items of first on Tuesday, May twenty third. So that's just next week. Uh, we'll have the public informational meeting for the kickoff of the Silver Springs Area Drainage Master Plan. Uh, we're trying a new format with um our our grant managers and partners, the Carson Water Subconservancy District and the engineering consultant, Kim Lee Horn, uh, for this kickoff and uh, the format will be a Zoom meeting, uh, I think at eleven forty-five for what we're calling the stakeholders. Um, so uh essentially, I I think Commissioner Keller's um invited, uh, but we also have like the airport uh Microsoft representatives because they own the property in the north side of Highway fifty. Uh, the school district, those types of entities uh that might have more pointed questions about uh what the results of the area drainage master plan uh might portend for future development. And then uh at five thirty in the Silver Springs uh Community Center, five thirty to six thirty, we'll have a public meeting. Uh, so of course, everyone is invited to that. Uh, and again, this is just the kickoff. So uh, sometimes I think when people hear area drainage master plans, they're not exactly sure what the implications are. Uh, it's it's as important to tell people what this data gathering gathering uh exercise will allow us to do, but more importantly, sometimes tell them what it won't allow us to do. Uh, it does not include funding mechanisms, for instance, for public movements. Uh, and then my last update also related to stormwater, uh, along with the county manager and uh Dustin Holman, our Road Director and Taylor Allison, our Emergency Manager. Uh, I attended the Walker River Irrigation District's meeting yesterday for the kickoff of uh the Walker's River Flood Assessment Risk uh Data Gathering Exercise. So as you all are obviously aware of, we are not just experiencing historic floods, but but now we need new data to to make sure that in the future we're more prepared. So um, available for any questions and I'll keep you updated of of anything that follows up as a result of these other meetings.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Keller.
Start off, I I attended your uh by Zoom, your planning workshop that you had, and I appreciated it. It it's a a good starting spot. I wish that it was on uh where you guys could come up with a uh some kind of video like what you guys do with the uh open meeting law, that type of thing where they can just go watch it so that anybody, even the public, can just go watch a clip because I thought you did a really good thing. Uh, also, you raised, you raised some questions that sitting on it when I sat on our advisory board of what questions that I might want to ask and and uh anybody that's on planning, maybe ask for a little input because there were some things that they just didn't understand there. So it would be really nice to move forward with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller. Oh, yeah, we do have that meeting recorded. Um, so we can probably post that. Uh, I do recall in the beginning, I I think we had some logistical issues because I forgot to turn on the mic. So I apologize for that, but hopefully the recording has the entire presentation.
I think that one had too. You didn't have it on the screen either.
All right.
So just watching. Another thing about the the flood management. Do we go through because there's a spot on there to invite other people, other stakeholders, if we needed to, to go through you or how do we get a list of who's been invited? Because there's some people in that area that uh if if they're not invited, I might request that you invite them.
Uh, you you're welcome to send me the the email of the folks. Uh, I think alternatively, you you should be able to forward them the the Zoom link.
Okay.
You receive in the in the email.
Okay, I I didn't know if you were trying to keep it to a certain amount of people. But I don't, you didn't mention like Weston Adams up um in N I C, which is a big section of that.
Yeah, that wasn't an entire list that I mentioned. I really remember everyone we invited, but if you have someone, of course, let's invite them and have them participate.
Thank you.
Anything further? Any public questions for Mr. Carriola? Good. Thank you for your presentation. Mr. Foley. Ah, yes, Mr. Foley. You're up.
Josh Foley, I can't close for the record. I do have a few items for you. I just want to address occasionally get some good natured teasing from the board about bringing bad news. And so I want to start off today by bringing some fantastic news to you. We have the opportunity to I to hire our new HR Director. And she comes to us with extensive experience. She's fantastic. We enjoy uh working with her. She has a MBA with emphasis in HR, if I remember correctly, and a whole bunch of other really cool education and certificates and all of those fun things, but we're really excited to have her. This is her second week on the job and she's been doing great, hit the ground running. Really appreciate her. But I want to introduce Amy Heagan if you want to come over.
It's all very nice to be here. Um, I have about twenty-five years of experience in HR. I've taught at HR MBA level for the last twenty years. So it's kind of my passion and what I believe in. I'm very thankful to be here. Everyone is so kind and welcoming. I know I'm really going to enjoy my time here. So thank you very much.
Welcome. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you and are welcome.
Thank you for allowing that piece of news. Now I'll get on to some of the other items you may be interested in as well. Currently Justice Court, we already had this discussion. We have completed the conceptual design on it, but I just want to uh forewarn you, we'll be coming to the next meeting with I'm going to duck. So we'll be coming to the next meeting with a an agreement with the architect uh to proceed forward with the actual uh construction documents for the the building. Estimated the building would be approximately five million construction. Of course, you add on approximately ten percent for architectural and engineering and all that fun stuff that goes with it. So we're at five point five. You had in building permits and connection fees and all of those fun things. We're probably going to be in excess of six million. We budgeted approximately two point two million. However, I have a plan and I think I've brought this up in the past. We did receive a second tranche of uh ARPA funds called the L A C T F funds. I don't remember off the top of my head what that means, but it's local government's additional money we get from the federal government as well. So what I'm going to bring back to the board, the hopefully the next meeting is to swap some of those funds where we allocate that towards the Dayton sewer projects. So we've allocated the first uh American Rescue Plan Act funds to the re and then use those funds approximately four million dollars towards the criminal justice court. The only reason for the switch is you're required to do a number of additional things with the second amount of funding of cross your Ts, dot your Is, all these different restrictions that you're already required to do for the Dayton sewer projects because you're on the state revolving fund loan. Where the first tranche of money doesn't require buy American and some of those other things, which I'm not opposed to buy American. But the reason why we're approximately a year behind on the lift station two A in Dayton, that project was because we cannot get those parts. So this would just make it a lot more seamless. You have the funding for both projects. It's just moving in between them to make them the most efficient for the captain. So that'll be coming back to you. Dayton Government Complex also anticipate coming back on June first for you. We have been meeting with the developer in the Traditions area of Dayton. And I have done an now an analysis now based on how much the property would be versus how much it would cost us to get the Miravida to a rough grade exact with utilities exactly the same place that it is. And we are almost identical in cost for the base ground. And so we're going to come back to the board with an option to work with the developer to do a lease purchase where the developer would build the property, design the property, build it with our input and lease it back to us probably for approximately a five-year period. And we would pay it off over five years and then own it at the end of the property or at the end of the five years. The reason why we would want to do that's number one for cash flows because we have hopefully a lot of those federal appropriations that we're asking for go through, in which case we have matching funds that we have to pay into, which depletes the amount we produce towards this this project. So if we could finance this over a five-year period, it works out better for us. We also anticipate savings of last discussion with developer approximately a million to two million dollars by doing it that still have to pay prevailing wage, but by the time we cut down some of the overhead by going through a C mark process, construction manager risk process, those type of processes, we believe that we can save money and get it done just as quickly, if not faster, by doing it this way. Have a better location in the Miravida project uh for the residents in Dayton. All in all, we believe it's it's really our best option in that area. Couple of years ago, we had different advice. We're like Miravida, we're going to actually be able to build it. If we do it there and we can't afford the other sites, this particular one, the developers worked with us enough to bring that cost down to where it's feasible. In fact, it's approximately a little less than half the price, just the improved ground than buying unapproved ground in the same area that we were looking at before. So just so everyone's aware of that, that will be coming back to you. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to come find me. I'll walk through what I know at this point. Those are the big things that oh. Uh, Angela Jefferson, we're super lucky, I'm sure, so I'm reporting all of that.
Any comments, questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, any other appointed official? No? Well, then we're done with that one. Advisory Board reports. We have, uh, we do have Amanda Bernand and hands up on Zoom.
Uh, good morning, Amanda Bernand. I'm the Stagecoach Advisory Board Vice Chair. Um, we did submit a transmitter letter. Um, so there was a at the January tenth Planning Commission, there was a tentative parcel map approved on Iroquois Trail in Stagecoach, splitting a twenty-four point eight-one acre parcel into four separate parcels. At the May fourth Stagecoach Advisory Board meeting, it was brought up that the owner of this tentative parcel map, Mr. Gock, stated to a neighbor that he intended to use a one existing well for all four parcels and not drill three additional wells. In discussion, I did call the Nevada Division of Water Resources. Mr. Gock has five point six acre feet of quasi municipal water rights for five mo- mobile homes. I also contacted the Ne- Nevada Division of Environmental Protection and they told me that because this would be for less than twenty-five people, this is a private water company. They have no water testing requirements like they do with a public water company. Although the owner, Mr. Gock, didn't disclose that this would be quasi municipal and he'd be having a small private water company at either the Advisory Board or Planning Commission meetings. Uh, Mr. Carriola has informed us that the tentative parcel map decision is final and couldn't be revisited. But there is a concern about just having these small private water companies in general. Both the Nevada Division of Water Resources and N D E P stated the county may have requirements such as water testing restrictions permitting. So I guess the question is, is does Lyon County have any of these requirements for a private water company? And if not, can this issue be looked into? And if this is something that should even continue in this county, there's also a concern that if these small private water companies fail, the owners of the property are at the mercy of this well owner. And if the well owner isn't diligent, they can find themselves drinking water that's contaminated with bacteria, E. coli, arsenic and other bad things. Or end up with no water at all. And what would occur then? So if the county does continue to allow these small private water companies, there should also be a plan if they fail. But there is a very big concern about how, we don't know how many there are even. Um, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other advisory board reports? Doesn't look like it. So we'll move on to twelve and the consent agenda. Uh, can we take on all the items? All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing, any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during the meeting. So do we have any items uh that the commissioners want to pull from the consent agenda? Uh, seeing nobody coming forward, do I have anybody from the public that wants to discuss any of our consent agenda items? If not, then I'll look for a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I meant that we approve the consent agenda items twelve A through twelve G as presented.
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, a second by Commissioner Jacobson. And I'll have a vote. All those in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Pass is five zero. We'll move on to thirteen. Can we start fifteen minutes before our lunch break and emergency meeting? So moving on to thirteen, public hearing on items for possible action proposed in ordinance and minimum line county code title fifteen, line county land use and development code type table fifteen point three two zero dash one, table fifteen point three two dash two three two zero dash two table fifteen dot three two zero dash three, table fifteen dot three two zero dash four, identifying which zoning districts allow restricted gaming and non-restricted gaming when an ADR is required and when a C U P is not required for the restricted or non-restricted gaming and other matter properly related there too. So have uh Mr. Carriola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lewis Carriola, Community Development Director presenting. First and foremost, this code change is not um proposing any change to allowable or conditioned uses in Lyon County's code uh with one exception, which I'll I'll touch on at the moment. It's intended to correct an error from uh twenty twenty uh when the county, and I'll get into it here, on December third, twenty twenty, uh, the Board of Commissioners adopted a number of Title fifteen code amendments that included the addition of restricted and non-restricted gaming within our land use tables. The planner's presentation and the subsequent publication and adoption of that code had um each of those uses applied in the opposite position they were intended to be. And from what I can gather, I believe the planner's presentation and all the voting, it was confused by the fact that when we hear the word non-restricted gaming, it might imply the regulation is not restricted when in actuality it's addressing the gaming use. In other words, non-restricted gaming is the more intensive gaming use with sixteen or more machines, uh, a race book, a sports book, a casino use. Restricted gaming is the less intensive use fifteen or less slot machines, like you would see at the supermarket or potentially a convenience store gas station. So when the code amendments came forward, the non-restricted gaming was added to our commercial and mixed-use zoning districts as being permitted with just a staff level administrative design review. Whereas the restricted gaming, um, which again is the less intensive use um required a conditional use permit. So uh as outlined in the staff report um and the proposed uh ordinance uh draft, uh essentially we would be reversing the allowances within land use tables fifteen, three, ten, three, twenty dash one, two, three and four within every commercial zoning district that has allowances for gaming as well as our mixed-use zoning districts. As well as our mixed use zoning districts essentially. Taking a P which stands for permitted with ADR is replacing it with a C additional use permit and vice versa. Um, the one addition that was not addressed in the twenty twenty update. Was uh the employment mixed use zoning district. Uh, did not have um a conditional use permit for non restricted gaming included. And I think it was omitted because the E M U zoning district is a little bit of a stepchild in the land use tables in that. It's grouped with the industrial zoning districts as opposed to the other commercial and mixed use districts. Um, I I know I kind of bounce around in the slides here, but uh I believe the report kind of outlines that and I don't really know that um. There's much analysis necessary to understand what happened. Um, I I did include here in the presentation. Uh, just some some screenshots from what was presented to the board in December of twenty twenty. So it wasn't something that happened when we published and essentially was incorrect throughout the entire process. Um, and I and I think I can probably wrap it up there and ask if you if you have any questions.
Questions? Okay. Uh, very good explanation, by the way. Um, any public comment? On this change? They said correction. Okay, I'll look for a motion then.
Um, excuse me, uh, Mister Chair, no motion on this one is just to propose.
Oh, proposal, that's good. So I'll propose it right now. Yeah, propose it, please. I'll propose it as. From as a. As you said, as you stated it.
Thanks.
So it has been proposed. And we're ready to move on to thirteen B. Uh, we have a little time left before we break.
Mister Chair, I I'm gonna recommend that we take a break until eleven thirty and or. Actually, we should just recess for lunch.
Okay.
This meeting and then uh but take a break until eleven thirty. I do want to let everyone know on Zoom that we will remain on Zoom for the. Um. Special meeting, the emergency meeting, so you do not have to have to leave Zoom.
That sounds like a good proposal to me. Then we will go ahead and break for lunch, uh, break for a break and we'll return with the emergency meeting at eleven thirty.
Um, one more thing, Mister Chair, what time are we going to reconvene for this meeting now?
Um, I would imagine. Uh, we'll come back at one. Or you want to go longer for everybody to have a little bit more chance to go to eat. I'm open to recommendations.
But I think one would be fun.
Okay, one o'clock it'll be. We'll reconvene the regular meeting back at one o'clock. Coming back. All right. Whenever you're ready. I'll start reading. Oh. Wuss on that throw. Yeah, I'm getting your rights on that one.
We're unmuted.
All right. We'll get this started. It is eleven thirty one and we're going to have Lion County Board of County Commissioners. Emergency meeting at eleven thirty uh May eighteenth, twenty twenty three. Action be taken all items, unless otherwise noted, no action be taken on any item until it's properly agendas. Avoid meeting disruptions. Please play cell phones and beepers in the silent mode, turn them off or turn them off during the meeting. The boards preserves the right to take items in a different order, accomplish business in most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration. Items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions and comments by the general public and such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. And the Board of Commissioners special meeting. All or some of Board Commissioner members meet members may elect to call end of this meeting. Uh, public can access the meeting at the above address. And everybody is here for a roll call. All commissioners are in chambers. Pledge of allegiance was previously accomplished earlier this morning for the first meeting. And public participation action be taken on any item until it's properly agendas anticipated. The public participation will be held this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation or ask to state their name, name for the record. And will be limited to three minutes. Board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item, action item. But before the board takes any action afterwards, please print your name at the clerk's desk. For possible action review and adoption of the agenda, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mister Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Henderson. Do I have a second? Second, okay, Commissioner. Hendricks will call on that one. And um we'll move on to uh a vote. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Anybody opposed? Good. Down to five, regular agenda. Action be taken all items unless otherwise noted for possible action approved, a resolution declaring an emergency for Lion County due to flooding. And I have uh our. County manager. Sir.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager for the record. Um, so I am asking that the board declare an emergency um again this year. Um, due to spring runoff. Um. As we all know, we had a historic winter. Um. The Walker River and the Carson River Basins achieved new. Records um this year. And with the. The extended periods of warm weather that we are having or and are expected to have, we are expecting significantly higher flows upon the river. Uh, specifically the Walker, but also on the Carson. Um. The and just to clarify, the declaration would cover both. Um. So, um. In the twenty seventeen flood, we had about a max flow on the Walker River of twenty nine hundred and ten cubic feet per second. Um, the National. River Forecast Center is expecting that. The Walker River. To be flowing at about three thousand by Sunday, Monday uh timeframe and about thirty five hundred by uh Wednesday, Thursday. Um, and then the Walker River Irrigation District is predicting that uh it will peak out at about forty two hundred cubic feet per second. Um, that's about double what is in the river currently. I'm sure you all drove over it when you um came today. It's pretty high. Um. So we're obviously pretty concerned and we are expecting impacts from that. Um, you may notice that the emergency manager is not here for the emergency meeting. She's actually out at the road yard preparing. Um, we have Lion County crews out there preparing some. Sandbags. And um as well as volunteers already, we are planning a. Community sandbag day on Saturday. We will be getting that information out uh um hopefully today. Um, if if it's not out already, I don't know. Um, and so, um. You know, I provided as backup some information from the Walker River Irrigation District. Um, and just some of the numbers. Um, I know that you've seen these reports. And um and and recent meetings, um, but there's some things to to focus in on on page five, the April to July runoff forecast. Um. East Walker River is expected to have to pass through about two hundred and ninety thousand acre feet uh in that timeframe. That's at the fifty percent exceed and so it could be. Um, higher than that, but that's. Where we're. Roughly where we're expecting it. Um, in two thousand seventeen, it was only two hundred and eight and so far this year, because it has been such a cool spring, we've only had sixty five thousand. Uh, acre feet go through. And so um you got a lot, you have more water in a short amount of time. Um, and so that's not. Great for for the river, obviously, um for flooding. Uh, same thing on the east or on the West Walker River, excuse me. Um, we're expecting. Uh, four hundred and sixty five thousand acre feet based on the snowpack that's still up in the mountains. Um, with twenty seventeen, the actual being four hundred and six, and so far we've only had sixty four thousand acre feet come down. Um, this year, so there is still a lot of water that's going to have to come down between um. Now and July. End of July. So um we're expecting high flows, we're um. Just stick around for quite a while. Um, the impacts could be um. You know, could could stick around most of the summer, so um at least a good portion of the summer. Um, skipping a little bit to page seven um in your book, this is uh. Bridgeport Reservoir Forecast and Operations Plan. Um, couple of differences here that um. For Brian with the Walker River Irrigation District and shared. Um, is that it is expected to hit max storage and go a little bit above that to where the siphons will kick on on the Bridgeport reservoir. Um, they're still not expecting it to spill, but that will add extra water to the um. Uh, to the um. To the river below the Walker or the Bridgeport reservoir. So um you can see the red line there is expected releases. Um, we're expected to hit twelve fifty. Um, the only reason it's not the there right now is because of the. The pool in the reservoir is coming up, so it hasn't. Reached max outflows yet. Um, but it is uh actually that may have changed today. I don't know. Um, but anyway, that uh. I wanted to point that out at some point when those siphons kick on, it will add um. Probably. Close to another five hundred, four hundred and fifty, five hundred C F S on the. East Walker on the West Walker. Um. It's uh the. Releases will be, and I guess I should back up for just a second. Oh, I guess I did talk about it. For max flow seventeen hundred CFS. On the West Walker, we're looking at a max flow of thirty-two hundred CFS coming down now for the West Walker. And so you can see the various graphs there. Moving to the. Page ten. You'll see. Where this graph shows major and minor flood stages of the Stroh Snyder Gage upstream, up near the State Park. And it reflects those similar numbers there. And so you can kind of see where. Major flood stage is on. On that and how long of a period that it is expected to stay that way. So you can see it's July before the water starts to go back then. Going over to the West Walker. Not quite major flood stage there. It takes a little bit more water, but definitely minor flooding. And you can see. Again, it tells a similar story as to the length of time. That we're expected high flows. The next page on page eleven or twelve, excuse me, slide twelve is the main Walker River flows. This is here by Mason at Snyder Lane. And this is the one that is probably most concerning to me anyway. And it shows the, so the purple line shows the Walker River near Mason and you can see there that we do. It is projected to get a major flood stage. And that is sometime. Next week, probably. So, so anyway, I. I'm happy to answer any, any questions. I guess there. Any questions you may have, then. We can go over the declaration if we want.
I have a question on the, the Walker. Do we have any prediction on Wilson Canyon and the level? It's probably five to seven feet down from the road right now. Any idea where it might flood the road?
Um, I, you know, I, I couldn't answer that. We have to, we had a meeting. Yesterday and NDOT was there and we. They weren't sure either. So it's kind of hard to say, you know, when the ninety-seven flood happened and the roads got washed out, there were really. Gauges there, so the flows there are estimates. So we'll kind of have to see. What that looks like. But I, at this time, I don't think we're expecting an impact later. That could change. So if we get, you know, record high temperatures, it could increase the flows, right? So we end up with higher flows all at once. We, we just don't know. These are based off of kind of what we can see right. And, and I do want to make clear, I mean, it is just a forecast. It could cool down too. I mean, we just, we just don't, don't know.
So that brings on the next question. What? Do we look at as a possible honest forecast, other than it could be warmer, it could be cooler? Yeah. We have any, you know, storm, rain, cold weather, further out that they'll, that weather forecasters have talked about?
Yeah, and once you get past the, you know, a week or two, it's kind of tough to tell. I will say that again, that thirty-five hundred flow rate that's supposed to hit sometime next week. Was from the. From the National River Forecast. So that would be their official. Forecast.
Well, I'm just, I know when I, I'm in the Walker River Irrigation District meetings that we always get the. Forecastor from up in Reno and, you know, he'll say, well, we've got these storms, cold storm, warm storm. They're stacked up in the Pacific. They're predicted to come down. You know, we looked at the last five or six eighty-degree weather followed by, you know, some seventy-degree weather. Now we're back in the eighty-degree. Just seeing if they had any. Possible predictions.
So the, I, my understanding, we had a similar briefing yesterday. My understanding is that they are. At the moment, at least, we're seeing the, the probability that the temperatures will increase after next week.
Sounds great.
So, but we, but I just don't know.
Yep.
It's still too far out. There are chances for thunderstorms this weekend, so that can play a factor in it as well. So. Obviously, we'll be keeping a pretty close eye on it. I'll be working all weekend. So our emergency manager. And likely our roads director. So our plan right now is to kind of keep it to senior level staff and then be ready to call people in if we need it this weekend. But like I said, the flows are more or less expected to really creep up. Next week, you'll see kind of a jump in it tonight. And then, and then really. After the weekend, after we have several ninety-degree weather days. It takes a while for the water to come down the river. So there's about two days difference between when it leaves the reservoir and when it gets here. So. Little bit of warning there. So we have a little bit that we can. Can look forward. You know, we've just, we've been working on all kinds of contingency plans to, just for county operations as well. Hopefully not have to use any of them, but we do have plans in place. So. Just wanna. Want to let the board know for members of the public that are here, I know, I know I've gotten some questions. Why are we, why do we? Declare an emergency, then declare gone, and then declare another one when it seems to be similarly related? That has to do with the whole FEMA process and that's the way the state tracks all that stuff. So you don't want to just leave one emergency. They're, they're separate events. So. That's how it's defined. So just to provide a clarification.
Commissioner Henderson. Thank you, Mister Chair. What's the forecast for the Carson? We've, we've got a lot of information about the Walker and we were supposed to have a briefing on the Carson. The meeting got canceled.
Yes.
So can you? Just a snapshot of what?
Sure, yes. So on the Carson River, my understanding is it's supposed to. Five to six thousand cubic feet a second, which is high for the Carson, but it's not. I don't believe that it's minor flood stage for most of it. And so we, we will be continuing to watch that as well. That one, we have a little bit longer timeframe because we can see what's happening in Douglas County. And so we have a little bit more time to, to prepare. There are fewer homes that are in the flood plain in, in the Dayton area. And so. The impacts of, you know, I mean, there will, if it, if it hits. Minor or major flood stage, I mean, there will be impacts, but it'll. It'll be fewer. We've been working with residents already to. Prepare them. I don't know. I, you know, in speaking with our emergency manager, I know she had planned kind of a door-to-door campaign. I'm not sure where we were at with that, if it's already happened. But the, the number of homes there that are impacted are few enough that we can do that there. And like I said, we will be, we will be monitoring it, but right now the, the. The walkers are major concern.
Any other?
At our meeting last night, we did discover, did discuss this, the status of the Carson River. And it does seem that the estimates that they had earlier have proven to be. Over what we're actually seeing. So they're not as concerned as they were initially.
Yeah. And on the Walker, the estimate, it's, it's kind of been the opposite where the estimates have been a little bit lower and it keeps ticking on. So.
Any other comments this side?
And just from personal observation, it came down from Kingsbury Grade. Yesterday afternoon and the west side of Douglas County just looks like one big lake. I don't think there is a piece of property over there that didn't have standing water on it. All of the canals and ditches are full to the brim. Top of the road. So they, they've got plenty of water to be concerned about. I'm just hoping that their estimations are. And be such that they don't have any problems at that side of the, of the state.
I do have one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
Are, are we confident that our upstream reservoirs are up to this task? We feel confident about that?
I see Mister Brian's on there, but yeah, I, I think at this time that we're not. You know, the main goal is, in talking with Bert, is operating them in such a way that they don't spill. And so, and, and at this point, that's not forecasted. So. That changes, we will. We will obviously, like you know, but. At this time, I would say yes.
So do we have Mister Brian going to give us some information or is he just on? Bert, you're gonna?
He may just be listening.
Okay, just listening.
I haven't seen him on the screen there, so I'm not gonna put him on.
Yeah, sorry, Andrew. I was on, on the phone for a second there. What, what, what was the question? Sorry, Mr. Rob.
If you had any, any additional information you wanted to present. So we'll let you do that now. If not, that's fine too.
The only kind of update that I have from some of the, the presentation that, that. You guys should have in front of you. Was we did get a notice from the California Nevada River Forecast Center this morning. The, there is a little bit of. Positive news. The, it's, it's funny to say that the positive news would be. Cloud cover and the potential for thunderstorms, but that could actually slow down the melt process over the weekend. So that, that could, we're seeing some of that with the ensemble models where we've got a little bit of a slowdown over in Bridgeport Reservoir this morning. On their forecast. So. Just to give you some insight, it's not, it's not a tremendous amount of water that, that would be. Slowed down from the melt in the upper valleys to the tune of maybe a couple hundred CFS, but any of that could actually benefit us. The concern that we do have is our projections based on the forecasted models is that we are going to encompass around four thousand two hundred CFS in the Mason. Gauge area on Snyder Lane. And for the presentations that I've given to the, to the board previously, you know, our projections from. Those earlier times were to be in the three thousand CFS range. And to give you some perspective, in two thousand seventeen, the max amount that we sent down in that area was. Two thousand nine hundred and ten CFS. So quite a significant amount more of water potentially during this go-around. We still have yet to see all of the low and mid-level snow completely melted out. There are several sites that usually have melted out by about the first week in April that are. Still under, under snow and have several inches of water there. The. Concern at this point moving forward is that. Unless we get lucky by getting some cooldowns and some temperature changes and swings variations periodically to kind of help offset. We're going to see a pretty high peak for a very long time. To the tune of between starting this weekend to about the middle of, of July, we could see ourselves in. Either moderate to major flood stage. Here in Mason. And the, the, the current operations, we've, we've continued to do what we've been planning from, from day one. We've kept the reservoir levels low. We're at seven percent capacity at Bridgeport this morning and twenty-one percent capacity at Topaz. But we are storing, even though we have the gates fully open. I know we've got a lot of criticism from people at far and wide with regard to the reservoir being low and having this much water. Had we not done that, we'd probably end up being in a worse position at this point already because we can only get so much water out of our reservoirs. So we, we will be taking the peaks off. We will continue to see storing occurring in the, the both reservoirs, Bridgeport and Topaz. But at some point, it is going to be. Not much else that we can do. We have operated Bridgeport in a way not to spill, and that is still the proposal is not to spill over there. But we do, with the current forecasted projections, we do feel as though that we're probably going to exercise the safety siphons. So rather than only having about eleven to twelve hundred CFS coming out of the East Walker, out of Bridgeport, we potentially could see to the tune of seventeen hundred on the east side. And then from the west side, we were anticipating probably going about twenty-eight to twenty-nine hundred CFS. And those projections have slid up to about three thousand two hundred. So that's really where. Where the, where the rub is gonna be when we have all of those waters in the system at once. That's when we're really gonna be. Hunkered down and trying to watch. At this point, we're not sure where the weak points are. We're monitoring that. We're trying to see where we're at, but. We were definitely gonna have to hold tight and, and kind of just monitor and see if we can mitigate. If there's anything that kind of pops up, but it's. We're, we're, we're definitely behind the eight ball, so to speak. We don't have a good feel for where those areas are. And it's a little late in the game to build anything up if, if necessary, but we will do what we can. The, the growers, the users, they are utilizing as much the resources they can, calling on those water rights and spreading water as they can. The unfortunate thing is that there's only so much water the ground will take. If they end up back in the drains, the drains are backing up because the river's high. So we, you know, during the last warm-up in the beginning of May, we had several. Folks call us about the drains, thinking that they had failed, but they didn't fail. The, the river is just running that high. So. Right now, we're just trying to mitigate, trying to keep everything clean and open to the best of our ability and, and hoping that we get a little bit of luck on our side. Hopefully that answers some of your questions. If, if you have other questions, please feel free. Give me whatever you got.
Any further questions? Okay. Have any, a lot of people watching, any public? Input questions? Don't see any hands, nobody in here. So. You have a comment, Commissioner Keller?
Just ready for a motion.
Okay. I could read the. Declaration.
That one's up to you.
Nope, we'll just go ahead and go with the. The motion.
Motion to approve number twenty, resolution number twenty-three, declaration of an emergency due to the flooding event.
Second. Everybody have a second on that?
Second.
Second? That was a question, not a declaration of the answer. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Right.
But for the record, I just want to state that it was Commissioner Henderson, second.
Yep, Commissioner Henderson, second. And that brings us to any other commissioner comments on? This emergency meeting? Then we'll look at the public participation. Any other public participation? You have three minutes and put your name on the record. If not. We'll adjourn at eleven fifty-six for lunch. And we are on fourteen A, no, we're on thirteen B. Yes. Yep. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. It is one PM. As advertised, we're back. The next item is for the. Possible action of conditional use permit continued from the April sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting. To approve a conditional use permit request from Blackcomb Property Group LLC to allow a self-storage RV storage facility. In the CC Community Commercial Zoning District on a three-acre parcel generally located to the southwest of the intersection of Dayton Valley Road. And Como Road, east of the Carson River and US Highway fifty at two-two-two Dayton Valley Road in Dayton. APN zero-zero-six dash zero-nine-one dash one-zero. PLZ dash two-zero-two-two dash two-one-three. So I have a presentation here.
Good afternoon, Bill Roth, Senior Planner. So before you, this afternoon, we have a conditional use permit for a RV and boat storage facility. This area here shows the property. Running along Dayton Valley Road there to the east of the Carson River. You can see the Red Roof building to the north. That's an existing self-storage facility. Then they're maybe fifteen to twenty years. The, the white roof buildings are commercial. I believe it's a fitness center there at the corner. This is just a zoomed-in image here, actually showing the different flood zones. So the unshaded area and the orange or yellowish area are buildable areas. No flood permits required for that. The, to the. West of that there, the red area that's in the floodway. Also marked off by that barony drainage ditch there. And that's not a buildable area. The applicant's proposal would not affect that area. Maybe outside of that. That drainage dish, I think you can see it a little bit more clearly there at the brown staking line there. This is just a legal street view image from Dayton Valley Road looking across the property. The red roof self-storage building that's to the north is in the distance there. You can see the fitness center there on the right. And then just going a little bit further north around where Como Road hits Dayton Valley Road. They can see a crosswalk there, according to County Roads Department, that is pretty frequently used by school kids. And so they, they do want to keep that in that area. So the property is located in the Community Commercial Zoning District. Self-storage or RV and boat storage are both allowed. Self-storage or RV and Boat Storage are both allowed there as long as the board approves a conditional use permit. However, there are some specific regulations tied to self-storage facilities. And we'll go over those a little bit in the next couple slides. So just to sum up, the applicant's proposal is for basically a hundred and four. Boat and RV storage spaces that would be located in their solar canopies. Which you'll see in the later slides. They propose no individual storage lockers. So it's. Sort of an unusual proposal relative to the category where you're used to having individuals going and storing their. You know, mattresses or personal belongings and individual storage lockers. That would not be the case here. They'd be coming in with, you know, larger trailers and boats and storing them under these solar canopies. There's no watchman's quarters. So basically all of the sort of security is done. They have a card key system and they have cameras. And they've indicated that they have a local employee that would visit the site a couple of times a week just to, to check on things. But they basically be able to monitor the timings and comings and goings and amount of time that anybody would stay at the site remotely. So this is the site plan and then from the applicant and then I've just added the red arrows here. So the driveway at the north there, you know, it's good because it has two driveways in and one out. And that's I think to prevent stacking of trailers onto Dayton Valley Road. I think the applicant will go into more detail, but I, I think total trips a day is, is pretty low nineteen or twenty. So it's pretty unlikely they would have stacking. As I did mention, there is a crosswalk there that roads indicated needs to remain. And I think there would be some possibly a conflict with the width of that driveway. So they might need to just. Extend the, the ingress driveway, maybe double it up. Or, or just work with us and, and roads. So I do have a condition of approval. So that if the private is approved, then we can continue to work with them, make sure that that crosswalk would be to the satisfaction. The gray areas basically show the different solar canopies under which the hundred and four RV and boat spaces be located. There is sort of one point of. Intention, I guess, so to speak, that you maybe would see in the staff report. So there is a requirement. I'll show this in the, I think the next slide. For the self-storage facilities that they have a solid wall around the full perimeter, all property lines. Basically, the applicant has proposed to increase the wall height along the front property line. But they, they are asking for some exception to that along the northern part, the western part there along Carson River and the southern portion there. Unfortunately, I, the code just doesn't allow that. It's pretty clear. There isn't an exception to, to, to not have the solid wall. So there are pros and cons with the solid wall or not having a wall in terms of visibility. Pro of maybe not seeing waste or the debris, which is probably unlikely with this project anyway. A con being that you can't see between this project and another project in the north if you have a wall. In terms of worried about illegal encampments or illegal dumping. So there are pros and cons may be, but the code is as it is. It doesn't allow that flexibility, unfortunately. So we do have a condition of approval to acquire the solid wall on the full perimeter. This is that code requirement. So there are several other requirements that we'll go over, but number three is. Pretty clear. As I mentioned earlier, this is in the Community Commercial Zoning District. And it just says the perimeter of the facility shall be screened by a solid base screen wall. So we just don't see flexibility in regard to that. So we did have to do that condition. As you're familiar with the conditions of approval, there are findings to be made and they're provided in the code. You know, I've got the highlights here. Basically, the project as condition does meet all of the requirements. There is a requirement for the roads department that there be a left turn pocket coming north on Dayton to enter the site. The applicant is fully agreed to do that. And so that's also included as a condition of the project. It would be subject to building permits to ensure public health safety and welfare. So staffs available, answer questions. I know the applicants here and they all send a presentation.
Questions from commissioners? No?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Dave Snellgrove. I'm planning and right-of-way manager with CFA. With me in the audience today are three of the, three of my clients, investors on the project and they. We delayed this initially from the April sixth meeting because they couldn't be here and they feel, and I do feel too, it's. Important to be able to come out. If you have any discussion items, it's better. To be able to talk to people face-to-face and they felt very strongly that, well, then we went to the May meeting and that ended up being canceled. So. They've gotten to see more of Nevada. They came in a different direction today, which is really nice. So they got to, they got to see more of our beautiful state. Bill did a great job in going through the basics of the site and the location, site photos. Master plan, the zoning. I'll go to the, to the site plan. So we've got a hundred and four. We've got a hundred and four. Boat and RV spaces that we're targeting on the site. We'd initially submitted this where, where we had some storage lockers that we could use. We. We pulled those out of the plan. What you see in some little striping there adjacent to some of the, on one side adjacent to the canopies is. Where people can pull up that these, part of section WW, the code requires. She have about thirty-four feet is the minimum. I think ours are thirty-five feet wide. Our driveouts, that still allows for two-way travel plus a ten-foot parking lane. So those little. Areas there, so some rectangles adjacent to the beige canopies. That provide that area and show that we have that in plan. Along the frontage, I do want to point this out. There, there was a big issue with screening and staff did explain when we came in. We're coming up on about a year ago that you put some, some additional teeth into section WW and part of that was relative to the walls. And screening, as we've been going through this. Application, we heard from the advisory board that, you know, the screening was important. We had a thought about putting. All evergreens along the front. Typically, the code would require. A mix of deciduous and evergreens. We have changed that. That would be all evergreens along the front and also too, I, I blew up the detail. It was down the bottom right-hand part. Doesn't make it too very large, but we did heighten the, heighten that front wall as well. As part of the response to some of the questions that came up and comments that came up out of the advisory board. The, the whole site is three acres. There's about a half an acre on the far western side that we won't using that, so won't be using this west of the Barone Ditch. There is a requirement that we have a trail going through that area. There's a trail to the north. It's kind of a. I don't know if it's DG path, but it, it's a graded trail area and we'll be continuing that on. And in the future, as more things develop here. A trail go all the way down and then be back up with Dayton Valley Road is the, is the plan. So we do have that as one of the requirements on the project. So there's the highlight of the plus or minus half acre area there. Bill went through and I'm not going to belabor this much, except I do want to point out one thing. Part of it is more for you as commissioners to take a look at. When you put something into code that's pretty succinct. It may bring about some unintended consequences with the, with fencing. We had requested. That we'd be allowed to use an open fencing treatment on the north, part, part of the north and on the west side and then part of the south. We understand the argument on the south and we understand fully the argument on the, on the western side. We're going to have pedestrian access there. So that screens it up. The north end, and I want to go. To a, this bottom left-hand image there, I put a yellow line approximately where. Where the six-foot wall would be required to be. What it does, when I was out there looking at the site. You've got these, I think those are Cypress streets. I'm not a tree expert, but I think they're Cypress. Whatever those are, they, it basically create an area that's. Really not seeing people could go in. I don't want people to get back in there and do anything whether camping or, or whatever. But you basically have a block wall with a mini storage on the adjacent property. And then we'd have a wall on our property. So that's one area. That I'd recommend, if you can't do anything about it on this, I understand. But when you put a code in place that doesn't have any allowance for reasonable flexibility. Some things like this can happen and we would hope that there could be some reasonable exception for this area and this area alone. But we'd understand if there can't be due to the black and white nature of the code. The images of the wall, we're using, it's a stamped concrete panel. Wall that'll have, they'll get slid in. I put these in and my clients thought they want to do something a little bit different. So they want to have something that's attractive. Oh, I do want to go back to one. Item here on our screening from day one. We, we have a requirement for a ten-foot landscape area along the front. We have a twenty-foot landscape area on the front. What that allows us to do. Is to go up at three to one and create a two to three foot berm. So the planting of the evergreen trees will start out two to three feet higher than what the tree would normally start out. To help and aid in that screening along the frontage. I will have, I'm going to my slide where I'll have Matt. Marani come up and go over. They, they've done many of the mini storage sites and they know operationally how they, how they run them. So. They're more equipped to talk about that than I. So I will hand it over to Matt.
Hi, my name is Matt Marani. I represent Blackcomb Property Group. In terms of operations of this project, we do not have it, we do not have it in the plan to be fully unmanned. We plan on having a local employee who, for the initial lease up will be there quite frequently. Showing people around. We will not have a watchman's quarter, but we will have. Storage shed for cleaning supplies and things like that. For the most part, the site will be automated in terms of the security cameras and the access control panel. So people can lease online and then enter through. Local employee will be on call. So if there is a problem that arises. They can be phoned by the tenants and show up. We're really excited to build this. We think it's going to look really good there. It's a state-of-the-line, state-of-the-art facility. And the operations, it's very low traffic. You know, once it's leased up, people come in, they pull out their RVs, their boats. They leave for a couple of weeks, they come back, they put it, you know, and, and they might not visit again for another month or two. So we don't expect a huge impact on Dayton. For operations that. Pretty much is all of it.
Yeah, with that, we're available for any questions you may have.
Questions from the commissioners? No? Question, Mr. Keller?
So I was looking at your, your solar panels. Are you using that just for, for your, are you selling it or are you? Just for your site? In other words, is this a so- solar farm that you can park under or is this a parking?
Eli May from Blackcomb Property Group. The solar will be solely for our site.
Okay. And then you, on your caretaker, they, they said, would you go out there and do maintenance, which I assume is a, a period of time, like four or five hours? Whatever, are you going to provide restroom facilities for him?
There will be no restroom facilities on site to lower the impacts of what we need to bring into the site. But, you know, in terms of what the site entails, it is a RV and storage facility. So. You know, everybody that comes in this place is a very high-end facility that we're looking to build. People are driving in, you know. Six-figure rigs and boats and, and things like that. So it's a little bit different of a characteristic than your typical self-storage. So just to have somebody on, on, on call and on site from time to time and able to support folks and help them out with anything. There typically isn't a lot of, you know, trash pickup that you would see in a self-storage facility or anything like that.
Yeah, I was just getting at, how long was he going to be there? You know, like if he's only there for an hour or two. And it's not a big deal, but if he's going out there to do maintenance on a regular schedule where he's going to be out there eight hours out of. Three days a week or three days a month.
We, we think that it'll typically take around an hour at the most to for him to, for her to go out there.
I don't have anything else.
Anything else, Commissioner Jacobson?
I'm just. I'm not sure on that. The wire. Wall, isn't this our first RV storage park with this going through?
Andrew Haseman, Lion County Manager, for the record. Yeah, I believe this is the first one that would, that is with this new requirement.
Looking further from the commissioners, anything from the public? I think on Zoom, nobody in house.
Okay. Looks like you might have a public comment in house.
Oh. Oh, certainly. Mister C check.
Chief, for real quick question, I think one of, one of the, Andy C check. I think one of your early slides. I think I saw the word sales. Is that? Did I miss that? And what impact would that have?
I don't, and that might have been in. Go back to my thing. It might have been in the definition of what we fall under where. If I had sales in there, I apologize. There wasn't any intention once it comes out of the code. Let's see. Like what? Will their self-storage RV storage, is he allowed use? I want to go back to that. I couldn't remember if there was any, anything of sales in there. I don't believe that I have anything in sales here. I went through some of those slides at the first. Very quickly because Bill did a great job covering a lot of the location and the zoning and the master plans, but there is no sales component to this.
Thank you. No further comment? Oh, we do. Mister Wright, go ahead. I was looking at my paper and didn't see.
Got cut off before I got started. Russ Wright from Dayton. Part of my career, I built many storage units, self-storage units all over the state of California. I would urge you to support this with the exception of the solid wall. All the way around the perimeter. For these gentlemen's security and the security of the adjacent property, if you build a solid wall and create an alley. We could very end up, very well end up with some of the homeless that can no longer sleep under the bridge because it's full of water. And so for these folks' security and the adjacent property owner, I think that this is the first time you're going to get to test. The rigidity of an ordinance that said, we shall always have. Perhaps the ordinance would say, we might usually have or something like that. But I think the, the wire fence. Around the portion of the property that these gentlemen have described makes a lot of sense.
All right, Commissioner Hendricks?
Could we eliminate that issue by putting a gate at either end of those two block walls to keep people out? I don't know.
I'm not sure that. Yes.
I mean, I assume we could have conditioned the project to extend, extend the wall or some sort of. Gate-like thing, but you know, probably have to be agreed with the next property owner to actually have an opening gate. So maybe we could draft a condition that allowed, you know, one or the other. If the other property owner was eligible to having a gate. Maybe that could be part of a condition. If they weren't, then maybe rather than having the wall fully parallel with the site, have a perpendicular portion. Lock that off.
You had something, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So. Don't we have a process in place where we have an ordinance? Especially in a Title fifteen and some of us come in and do something a little bit different. Isn't there a process to, to allow that?
I mean. We don't have, I acknowledge a standalone section of the code that allows us to go around the shell statement such as this. If it were put in a, maybe a different part of the code that was. You know, an optional condition to be considered as part of a conditional permit, but it's, it's essentially a baseline requirement for self-storage and RV storage facilities, the way that it's written. You know, the other option always with zoning, it's not a really good option in my opinion is a variance. But a variance, you know, at least in my experience, that's really tied to unusual topography of a site or a very unusually shaped lot that prevents somebody from. Building something that would match with the others in the area and depriving them of a, of a right. Which we don't think is the case here. So we just feel that the way the codes are written with the shell, that there really isn't that liberal room. Way that it's written.
Currently, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Henderson, if I could expand upon. Commissioner Henderson, if I could expand upon some of the thoughts there. You know, part of the code in the way this written, if this didn't require a conditional use permit. That when you're going through the conditional use permit, these uh, requirements in WW. Can be determined through this process, through the conditional use permit process, but when you're already in a conditional use permit, it doesn't give you that latitude. Um, so we're. Really, well, there's kind of two different things here. We're already in in a conditional use permit. You guys just adopted this not too long ago. And part of it. I believe comes down to interpretation of what it is. Staff may disagree with me and that's okay. But. You know, we feel that this area does make some sense for something different when looking at it in a more finite case. You're the ones that put the language in place. It's this board. So it felt. We we had. We had understanding and support of open fencing at the advisory board level. The planning commission seemed to have an acceptance of of the idea too, but we're very reluctant and I rightly so. To go and change something relative to some black and white code language. So we're bringing it to the board to put the who put that language in place and. There may be some latitude and there may not, and either way is fine.
And asking county manager for the record. So um, code specifically says that you can't use the CUP process to create a variance. Um. So I mean, I can. I don't know, you had a presentation a while back, so I'm not sure if that exists, uh, if we have that right now. But however. Um, the neighboring property owner, Mr. Phil Cooley, um, I believe is online, but just texted me and said that he was okay with me telling you that he would build. Defense between the buildings or between the walls, so. Just wanted to let the board know that. So if you wanted to throw that on there as a condition, I think they could work with them to. Do that. That's interesting.
That would block. Entrance, front and rear. Um, any any other comments? Our comments. Other comments, then we can look for. A motion and the conditions and everything else. If uh, have a commissioner that wants to come up with something.
I'll take a swing at it.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move. That we grant a conditional use permit. The the additional cute, yeah, conditional use permit request from Blackcomb Property Group LLC to allow a self-storage RV storage facility. Into CC community. Community commercial zoning district. To allow. A three acre parcel generally located in the southwest of the intersection of Dayton Valley Road and Como Road. East of the Carson River and US Highway fifty at two twenty-two Dayton Valley Road in Dayton. APN zero zero six dash zero nine one dash ten PLZ two zero two two dash two one three. Based on the findings and the conditions in the staff report with an additional condition that if. Uh, if. They reach an agreement with the the adjoining property owner to build a wall between. The wall that they're gonna put in on the the west side. And the. And and the existing wall. Then they could be allowed to put a a chain link fence. On the north portion.
Pardon me, just to clarify, a gate?
No, I said a wall. Uh, I I I they secured the security end with a masonry wall. With with a gate, if they want to put a gate in it, that's fine.
Okay. So just. Basically two walls and intervening gates so people can walk up and clear out.
Right, I mean, that's an opening gate. My my intention is that they still have to put the fence up on that, but they don't have to put the block wall all the way. If they get an agreement and the wall and you gotta have some kind of proof coming back to the community development director. That that's been done. Before that condition would take effect.
Just Andrew Haskin for the record, just a little clarification. So you're saying if they build a gate, then they don't have to put it the wall?
No, no, no.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure.
There needs to be a wall, whether or not there's a gate in there. I don't care. Okay, that that that'd be up to Mr. Cooley if he wants access to that little piece of the property. Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Keller.
Just clarification with Wes. So it's a non-visel, so you can't see through the wall, right? We're blocking off. That, so you can't see down there. So if that's the case that we're gonna block that off. I wanna, I would think that uh, Phil Cooley in our, when he does that, can remove that landscaping in between. Because then you're not gonna see any of that.
It's his property, huh?
Yeah, well, I think it was a condition that he had to put it in in the first place. So if that could be removed when he does that.
Yeah, I mean, that can't really be part of this motion because his property is not really in discussion. I mean, the. But I, yeah, I mean, I.
Well, you're gonna have to go with it with him to talk to him.
I I think the community development director can make that call.
Fantastic. That's all I wanted.
So did you want to clarify the end of the two walls to block that alley area between there?
Yes, uh. Yes, so the the additional condition to be added is that. In conjunction with the adjacent property owner, a a solid masonry wall is. Constructed between. The west side wall that you guys are gonna put in. And. The adjoining property, the adjoining wall. Do you understand what I'm saying? Do I need to draw a picture?
I thought, um, Commissioner Henderson, I thought in your original motion. That you were, you said. So you're saying they could put up a chain link between the. The two properties.
No. Put the picture back up, Andrew. He put the picture back up, please. A- a- anyone?
Yeah, if you go to probably the landscape plan, I'll show it. Yes, one of them that shows where.
Yes, the the one that had the green and the red and all that good stuff on it, right, this one.
Yeah.
Okay, so my, the the intent of my motion. Is to approve this tissue use permit based on the findings and conditions with a new condition. That. If they. Get reach agreement with the adjacent property owner and a solid. Wall is built up, closing that gap. Then this, the top, the top portion is red, they could, they can put chain link in.
Sorry, people, I'm minimal if you're able to see this, that you think about a wall here. The wall here to close this area off.
Yes.
Okay, I would, that's what I was thinking you were saying.
Do you want? No, I don't know.
No.
And Interhastin County Manager for the record, so we can't. Through the CUP process, remove the requirement to build a solid. I just want to make sure that that's. Because the the code does say shell. They would have to file a separate variance, um, if they didn't want to build that, that's all.
So we can't do that. In this process.
The way that the the code is written.
Do I withdraw my motion? I'll try it again.
That's the confusing part.
Well, basically, we're, if we have a solid wall, our concern is that with. Solid walls and the adjacent property in this property, you're creating a space for people to live and nobody will be able to see it unless they creep over the top of one of the solid walls. So we're looking at blocking off one end and the other to keep people from moving into that area. So that's what I was understanding. We 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 would add that condition that you would have. A chain link fence at each end or a solid wall with a gate so that people could get in there and clean. And take care of the shrubs and trees and everything else. So that was kind of what I was looking at as far as a condition.
Right, I and and Mr. Chair, I I understand that, but if we can't. Use a CUP to. Change the ordinance, we can't do it, so.
So you can, Andrew Haskin for the record again, so you can use the CUP to put a requirement for the the gate to eliminate the the issue that they they would have.
But but that's not on their property.
So you can say that if they can obtain it, I. You know, permission or something like that. I I. And and you maybe don't have to, maybe just. Leave it as is, I understand. But that's what your intent is.
So the condition would be they're allowed to build a fence if they uh, gate across both ends, still the solid wall. Get it both ends to stop that. The things in there as long as the other owner does it. So we're just allowing you to do that if you come into it, but you're still gonna have to have the brick wall.
Right.
My recommendation would be to not not put that condition on there. You can't condition somebody else's property. I mean, it would have to be like a if, you know, and then. At that point, I don't, I mean, they're always already free to do that.
But they are free to do that on their own, keep people from building little tents in the middle of that space.
Mister Cooley could build up a wall if he wanted.
Correct. So I. My my recommendation would be to leave it conditioned as is.
Uh, Commissioner Keller.
Is this a big homeless problem area?
Yeah, actually, we do have a uh, a fair amount um, down by the river in Dayton.
Right.
How about a condition to just plant lots of cactus in that area?
They're still not their land. So uh. I um.
Did my exercise.
Yeah. So. I- i- if we approved this today as presented by staff with. These findings and these conditions, is there a way they can come back at a later date to try to get a variance up for them? Or or a a way to get the agreement with Mr. Cooley?
They can pull one in as long as they agree, it sounds like.
Yeah, I mean, they they're, we don't, the county doesn't need to regulate whether or not they have an agreement with Mr. Cooley. I mean, that's between the the two private parties. Um. As far as the variance thing, yes, they could apply for a variance. We did inform them uh, previous to.
Okay.
The hearing that that was a, that was a possibility and the board could certainly uh, prove that it would be a major variance. So um, I, you know. My opinion as staff is that the findings might be difficult to make on that, but uh, um, but it is a possibility and the findings that that's up to the.
All right, because because I I do understand the concern, you know, however, I do think there are solutions. So. At that, at this point, Mr. Chair, I would like to move. That we. Approve a conditional use permit request from Blackcomb Property. To allow self-storage RV facility based on the findings and conditions contained in the staff report.
Second, okay. I'll second that. Okay, we'll move around. So we have a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Hawkeye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, do you want to go public comment or?
I did.
Okay.
Earlier.
Aye.
Okay, so we have five, I and a zero, may. So we are done with thirteen B and. Russ on with your project.
On that laundry cycle ride with us.
Nice meeting y'all. Enjoy Nevada.
And I look forward to seeing this facility.
Yeah. I'm with you there. Tomorrow.
All right. We are gonna go on to uh, item fourteen A on the regular agenda for possible action to point up to two members to the debt management commission with one member for the position of member at large. With a term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty five, and one member from the GID in the county. Applicants are Ethelda Marjorie Gattenberg for the GID member and at large and any other applicants received prior to the meeting. I don't believe we received any others. So we do have one applicant. That would be Ethelda.
Mister Chair. Um, if I may, I'll make a motion that we. Uh, appoint um. Or approve for appointment, Ms. Gartenberg to the debt management. Many.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, a second by Commissioner Henderson. And all those in favor, I'm sorry, need to talk here for a second. Any input, any commissioner comments or public comments? I believe you will, but. I see none. Vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Okay. Motion carries. Uh, moving on to fourteen B for possible action to point up to two trustees to the South Lyon County Hospital District Board with a term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Applicants are Joanne Lawson and Suzanne Cunningham. And any other applicants received prior to the meeting. I don't believe we've received any. So therefore, uh, do we have any commissioner comments or public comments? Seeing none, I will look for a motion on that one.
Mister Chair, I move that we appoint Joanne Lawson and Susan Cunningham. As trustees of the South Lyon County Hospital District Board with terms expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Henderson, a second by Commissioner Jacobson. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Harry five zero. Uh, fourteen C for possible action, appoint one member to the Fair and Rodeo Board with a term expiring December thirty first. Uh, twenty twenty six, and I believe we have the one member. We call.
Just to bomb that.
Yeah. Let me get to that. Hospital. Right. Bomb back.
Yeah, Christie on that.
Right. Any comments both from commission or public? None, and I will look for a motion on that.
Chairman Hawkeye, I'll make a motion that we appoint Christie Bombach. Bomb back uh. To the uh, become a member of the Fair and Rodeo Board with term expiring. December thirty first, two thousand twenty six.
Hey, do you have a second?
Second.
Hey. Yes. Oh, we had a hand up from.
No, that that's not, that's the mouse.
Sorry, that was.
Okay. Um, so. Have a motion and I need a vote. How about uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Fourteen D for possible action, acknowledge the resignation from Elaine St. John from the Dayton Regional Advisory Board. And everybody should have that letter of resignation. Any comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, Mister Chair, I would just like to thank Ms. St. John for her service to the. To the Dayton Citizens Advisory Board.
I also. Present that sentiment that she has done an excellent job and we're gonna miss her. She's gonna be moving to California. So do we have any public comment? Any? I didn't see any on the board. Nobody in house. Then we will go ahead and. Accept her resignation. Don't think we, do we have to take a motion on that to accept it? We need to do a motion on accepting the resignation? I don't believe so. There's possible action, but I don't believe we.
It 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 was for possible action and it was to acknowledge, so you can, yeah, I would do a motion to acknowledge.
Okay, well. Then I'll look for a motion to acknowledge your resignation.
Mister Chair, I move that we acknowledged the resignation of Elaine St. John from the Dayton Regional Advisory Board.
Have a second.
Second it.
Okay, Commissioner Keller seconding that and Commissioner Henderson making the motion. Uh, honestly, I don't know what we do if we. Didn't pass that, she can't, she can't leave. All right.
She can't leave.
Yes, all those in favor say aye. Aye, anybody opposed? Okay, passes five zero, she is now resigned. Uh, fourteen E, believe that was late backup on that. We did have an applicant to appoint up to two members of the Dayton Regional Advisory Board with terms expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty three. And the other one, December thirty first, twenty twenty four, but I believe we only have one. Applicant.
That's all I see.
Yeah. So I would think that we would. Have that applicant at least have the longer term, in my opinion. So do we have any commissioner comments on the applicant?
Um, just one. Quick question.
Sure.
Or comment, when in reading through hers. The last sentence. I I think. It is my intention to help the community at large and provide a different viewpoint on issues that the community has. Is she saying that she wants to be, have a different viewpoint than the community or? It is my intention to help the community at large. And provide a different viewpoint on issue that the community has. If that's the case. I'm not.
Yeah, I. Understand where you're coming from.
I mean, that's. No offense, Russ, but are we changing Dayton to California on that one? I I ju- I just struggled when I was going through the packet with that, so maybe I'm reading that incorrectly.
Well. I don't. Yeah.
Yeah, she's online.
Morgan Brown is online. Um. So uh Ms. Brown would like to possibly explain that to Commissioner Jacobson, what uh her intention is there?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Morgan Brown for the record. Um, I don't necessarily believe that was my uh intention when writing my application. Um, it was more speaking to, um, you know, I have two young children and I just feel like um, I could bring a lot to the advisory board.
Just a different, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. In in that case, with that clarification.
Okay.
Um, I'll make a motion that we approve Morgan Brown to the, I guess it'd be the, yeah, two thousand twenty four, right? To the um Dayton Regional Advisory Board uh with a term expiring December thirty first, two thousand twenty four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson, a second by Commissioner Henderson. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes five zero. For possible action, approve clerk treasurer. Clerk treasurer's purchase of five rolling ballot bins in an amount not to exceed twenty two hundred dollars to be funded from a budget transfer from general fund contingency. And we have Mister Foley to explain that transfer.
Josh Foley, I'm comfortable for the record, so the uh clerk treasurer notification from Secretary of State that they have some additional funds to purchase things for the election. This is one of the items they discussed. Unfortunately, and it's a mystery to me why the state can't do it in somewhat of a grant format, but they require us to purchase it out of our funds. And if there's enough funds available after all the counties put in, you get reimbursed. So we are hopeful it's going to get reimbursed. But just in case, we have to uh say where the source of funding is coming from in case it doesn't get reimbursed by the state.
Any? Commissioner, questions, your comments?
That's okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Hocke. That's that's a great way to per- that sounds like stuff my something I might try and pull on me. So I think that is genius by the state to word it that way. So. That's all I had.
Yeah, I heard the checks in the mail. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty two hundreds come for sure. Commissioner Keller.
No, I'm just ready for a motion.
Any other commissioner comments, any public comment? Alright, we're ready. Commissioner Keller for a motion.
I move to approve the clerk treasurer to purchase five rolling ballot bins in the amount not to exceed two thousand two hundred dollars to be funded from a budget transfer from the general fund contingency.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I was about to jump in. Uh, so we'll go with Commissioner Henderson, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed?
Public comment?
Oh, comment?
You had another comment?
Okay, go ahead.
No, public comment?
Oh, public comment. Um, you did.
I did.
Okay.
Ah, alright, we'll move on again. For possible action. Approve the festival permit for Night in the Country LLC, subject to the conditions listed in the permit document. Commissioner or Commissioner County Manager.
Got moved up.
Six.
Please.
Got moved down.
Get a hell of a pay cut too.
Yeah, we're saving the county some money now.
Yeah, and you're asking like, for the record, um. So clerk treasurer, uh, the clerk treasurer's office asked me to um present on this, so um I'm happy to answer any questions. There was a um a letter in there with a number of conditions as a part of um the permit that fairly standard for what we've how we've been reading these types of applications. I do know that Travis is uh from the Boys and Girls Club is on um and he may want to wish to to speak on this a little bit before the um. Uh, you know, before the vote, but uh just wanted to let you know staff's recommendation is approval as condition.
Okay, um, hey Travis, I think I see you on there and you're already unmuted, so floors yours.
Uh, well, you know, I just uh definitely want to uh thank you for the ongoing support. Also want to recognize and thank uh Andrew and the staff uh for their help uh with this. It uh it it definitely uh, you know, uh, was a was a thorough process, which I can appreciate. And, you know, we're familiar with over the years. Uh, Justin Aguilar, my festival director, has been uh doing this particular piece for quite some time. And I think we've, you know, dotted the i's and crossed the t's. We're looking forward to a great event. And again, we we thank the county for all their years of support, truly.
Thank you. Uh. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Mister Crowder or to the county manager, any public comment, public questions? I don't see any, so we'll go for a motion.
Chairman, Chairman Hocke, they all had moved that we approved the festival permit for Night in the Country LLC um subject to the conditions listed in the permit document.
Second.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, we've got the motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Alright.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Have a good day.
Thank you. You have a good day also. Alright, for possible action review and discuss the appointment process for planning commissioners and provide direction to the county manager on the creation of a policy for that. Um, so I have talked to uh our county manager. Uh, we've had a lot of questions come up, so since this is put in by me, just a few things real quick. Um. Presentation, no presentations. Some people have showed up, some haven't. Some are on Zoom, some haven't. We really don't have a policy on whether we want them to have presentations. And I believe that everybody should be on equal ground. If we tell them they can do a presentation, everybody should be aware of that and be prepared or not. It's their choice if they want to do a presentation or not. I just think that needs to be out there. So along with that, the uh presentation, uh, we would have to say if we decided to have presentations, you know, would it be three minutes or five minutes? Um. More or less, I think that three minutes you can pretty well present your case, but that's my opinion. The other consideration, if you have presentations, would absolutely have to be how do we set them up? Do we draw numbers? Because the first person given presentation is at a disadvantage versus the last one who then picks up the pace and puts in all kinds of good stuff at the end. So that would kind of beg a question is that if we're going to do it, how are we going to do it fairly? And another thing that came up was if we do have presentations, and this came with the presentations for commissioner slot. Uh, I was looking at do we ask them questions when they're presenting or at the end? So I'm just kind of throwing this out before Andrew uh kind of gives a precursor to the situation. Uh, if we are going to ask questions at the end, then we also have to have that. How do we determine the order? And are we going to ask the same question to everybody? So we kind of have to decide how we're going to do that. And with all of this kind of uncertainty and how we would present it, my recommendation for us to consider would be that those questions are on a specific planning commissioner application. So that they've got to answer them for us, and we can read those without having the same application for all the other positions that we have. It would be something that they have to answer on their own, and we could evaluate it before we even get to that position. So just, you know, presentations, questions, kind of important. Uh, the last thought provoking thing that we'll throw in the mix here, and then we can get on with our little discussion. In several of the places that I've lived and bounced around, the either commissioner or supervisor of those districts was allowed to select or appoint, because we'd still have to vote on it, a commissioner from their district. And that was just something I'd throw out there because that's a possibility. Everybody feels like they'd have an equal chance of having somebody that they can appreciate uh on on their district's planning commission. Okay. I'll give it to you now.
Alright, Andrew Haskin, line county manager for the record. Um, yeah, so Commissioner Hocke approached me about uh coming up with some kind of process for um standardized process for selecting uh planning commissioners. And it, you know, we talked about it and said, well, this is really a discussion that we have to have with the entire board. So let's put an agenda item together and let's let's have this discussion as to what everybody would like to see as a part of that process. Now, to answer your question about the um you know, each commissioner picking somebody from their district, it's actually in state law that the um chair of the Board of County Commissioners is the one that gets to make that that selection. And then it's voted on by the rest of the board. So one of the um one of the the advantages, I guess, of being the um the chair. So um I don't know that we could change that necessarily unless you guys want to put together a policy and you have to I mean, the chair would have to agree to that, that um I don't, I don't know that you could. You can't change that. Yeah, so.
Okay, I just figured.
The district attorney is informing that we cannot change.
And he got a click.
And you got a, so so that is, uh, yeah, I mean, that's really, it's not realistic anymore. Uh, so um it has to remain that the 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 board chair is the one that the that picks the picks the thing. So um, you know, that being said, I mean, some things to think about with this process, and you really, it it's a it's a job interview, right? We come to the come to the board, um, you're you're selecting who who is going to um you know, who's gonna gonna represent the county on that. And so um it's a very, you know, planning commissioner is an important job in in the county. Um, there are some actions where they have the final say and some actions where they um, you know, where they make a recommendation to the board, but all of those items are, you know, all the discussion that happens on the planning commissioner, all part of the record when that that I didn't go forward, and if it ever gets challenged legally, uh, for whatever reason. The record from the planning commission is a part of that that court decision. So you really want to make sure that you've got um you really, you really want to make sure that you have good members on the on that board. So it's just some things to think about as you come up with um with some kind of process for how that hearing, I guess, would go. And then just to reiterate again, that it must be the board chair that gets to make that nomination.
Okay, Commissioner Keller.
So so the the power's already here. It's just now we're going to put it into a a policy, I guess, or something. Uh. The chair makes the makes the the motion. And if we don't approve it, he makes another one, another one. So you're you're going down the ladder. What I personally would like to hear from any applicant that wants to speak, I want to allow them to before we discuss it. So I would like that in the in the application that they would be allowed to speak for three minutes before, so we can hear from them and and get that done. Uh, other than that, that's the only uh thing that I have.
And I mean, I'm open to suggestions and just, you know, I don't want to violate law, but there are ways to make sure that we get input from commissioners. Um, that's what I'm looking at here is that we I, you know, when when I reach out to somebody and say, well, what do you think of this individual that's applying? I want to know because I'm going to, I'm I'm rank ordering everybody as the chair. You know, I like this one, I like that one, I like that one. Where am I going to put them? So I'm just looking at more of a commission process versus, yeah, I like this person, that's who I'm going to pick. And then, yes, they can be voted on or not. I can agree with them given the option of speaking, but I want them to all know ahead of time. And that's been our problem. Yeah, that we let them know. Right. They have.
Will be allowed three minutes to speak.
As long as they, anyway, we can let them know. Okay. Um, other comments? Comments? Input? I change your.
Fisher Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hocke. Um, in considering some of this, uh, obviously, living in Lyon County isn't a qualification for the job, it's a requirement, so that's out of the picture, but I I guess I've been troubled in the past. We've argued that we should have someone from South Lyon, and then all of a sudden last, it seemed like the last time we discussed this, it was turning into more of a Central Lyon County Advisory Board um where all of the appointees were going to come from there. I totally agree with uh, we should try and get the best people on this committee. Um, it shouldn't matter if they're in Central Lyon, North Lyon or wherever. I think in the past, we've been voting on address and not qualifications, and that's crying shame. Um. So I am all for letting them speak um and realizing that this is the Lyon County Planning Commission. Also in the past, I know we had a development in in uh Central Lyon where it was shot down by the Planning Commission oh, five or whatever the vote was. I know there was zero, four, and our commish- our county board of commissioners voted five oh four. And that seems like it may be where we need some outside of Central Lyon on that so that we don't have uh special interest creeping in or maybe residential interests from the planning commission being on there and swaying the committee. We want stuff we can stand on legally. We want we value, I value, the planning commission's recommendations, probably ninety percent of the time, if not more than that on my votes. We could probably go back and look. But I think it should be based on qualifications, and I definitely am for and I'm not downplaying our other committee, our um advisory boards by any means, but the planning commission is the really one we hang our hat on in a lot of cases. And I want the best people on there. So I say we look less at address and more their qualifications. Thank you.
Christian Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. I'm going to take a slightly different um approach to this, because I I agree that we should be choosing people based on qualifications. However, I also believe that we should take a look at where the planning projects are occurring in the county and make sure that there are people from that geographic area on the planning commission. So.
Maybe you could give us, sorry, Commissioner Henderson, maybe we could get a rundown on where the current planning commission all lives right now. That would be maybe pertinent to this conversation.
Believe we had a, we had a handout on that a while back, yeah. But as of right now, I'm not sure.
It it's all on the website.
Yeah. Um. I I'm just looking at this saying that, you know, we've got good input here. It looks like we've hit on a couple of things that we definitely want to have. I would uh certainly like to have a separate application, though that's, I really would like a separate application for the planning commission with questions uh that we feel are applicable, and we could also work on that. But we've got to get the best qualified person that is is going to get on that position. It it really shouldn't be oh, one from the south, one from the north, whatever, but it's kind of turns out that way.
Yes, yeah. Commissioner. Thank you, Mister. Um. Do we have any qualifications that a member of the planning commission has to meet other than being a resident of Lyon County?
I mean, not that I know of.
Definitely a registered voter in Lyon County.
Yeah, that because that may be something that not not for this discussion, but for a future discussion, maybe we do want to look at requiring members of the planning commission to have certain types of experiences. Just thought, just throw that out there.
Yeah, I mean, Andrew Haskin for the record, I'm not sure that that would be part of a selection policy. That would probably more have to be a code change, and I'd have to research NRS and see if that was even allowed. Um, I I, to be honest, I just don't know.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
Commissioner Keller.
I think sometimes it depends on where where we're at when we need a planning commission, where projects happen to be. Uh, we could get an influx in one area, one region. Uh, maybe we don't want all of them to be ex-planners sitting on a planning commission. We want, you know, a housewife or something that kind of says the impact of the neighborhood and that kind of thing that might be helpful. So uh I think we're going to just have to, when it takes an applicant, we're going to have to make that decision up here of what's necessary, what what do we feel is necessary as each individual commissioner and ask those questions at that time.
Okay. Think we have a few ideas in there. Um.
Yeah, so um circling back if I may, um, so you mentioned a separate application with with specific. a separate application with, with specific questions, uh, um, as the board more or less. So what, what would that look like? What, what types of questions do you want to see on there? I guess, um.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Keller.
Other than general questions, I'd like to ask him my personal questions here in the, in the room, because I'm, I don't want them to study for this or give me the, I want them just off the top of their head, give me certain questions. Other than, do you live in the county whereabouts? Those type of questions that should be on the application, which I think are already there. I don't have any particular one because I want to hear right when they come in here, especially if they give a three minute speech about their background and everything else, then I can question what they just said.
Um, this may be for Mr. Rye, but, uh, Chairman Hockaday, but, uh, it's my understanding that if you ask one question to one candidate, you need to ask the same question to all of them. Is that correct or not?
Steve Rye, District Attorney. Uh, not necessarily correct. It depends. You may have different questions based on qualifications. I think what Chairman Hockaday was talking about is having the standard list of questions that we start with. But you may have a, a question that's specific to one candidate based on experience or whatever, and that's appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Keller just said basically resume, and that's, uh, certainly, I, I'm just looking for a way to call this down so that we allow not only the applicants, but the commissioners have an idea how the appointment is being. Okay. And so I'm happy if we say all of you are allowed to do presentation if you wish. Um, you will be asked questions. So then you'd say, and questions, I agree, the questions are the best way to do it. You've got them on, got them on the hot seat. Uh, that was just an alternative because if you can ask them questions, then you're going to have to have an order. So you're going to have to have another procedure to make sure that you're fair. And that's, so I'm just looking at the best way that everybody up here feels comfortable with the appointments that we're making. And I think we've got to do some standardization in order to get to that goal. So I think we've had some good inputs here and hash it out and work on it some more, I guess.
Uh, all right. So, um, Andrew Haskin again. So just to clarify, no separate application? Um, but, but.
Do we want to?
I guess I'm not, I'm not, not sure.
Yeah. Do we want to have a separate application with some questions specifically to the planning commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Possible planning commissioners.
If, if, if I may, thank you. Um.
Go ahead.
You know, the, the planning commission is different a, a, and unique. So I think it would be beneficial. We did develop a separate application for planning commission members. And I don't think we should give them the opportunity to come make a presentation before us. I think they need to. Because if we have three applicants, the two of them come and give a presentation and one of them doesn't, well, the one that doesn't is going to get a vote anyway. So we just either make it mandatory or strongly encourage that they make a presentation.
Strongly encourage. I, I know the last, you know, with, when we're looking at people's schedules, if they're working a full-time job, you know, I, I, I think it should be strongly encouraged if they come, but they do need to know that. That's my point. Any other input?
Betty, Betty's iPad was.
Okay, Betty's iPad.
Hi, this is Betty's iPad speaking. Um, I just would caution because the NRS lines out how the application process is to go. Um, I imagine that there is some leeway as far as, uh, applications and questions and so on and so forth. But just, I'm just cautioning you as to how, uh, far you can take this. Because it is part of the NRS as well as a county ordinance as to how the application process is to be run. Um, I kind of agree with you that if the person is at all interested, that they should be at the meeting. And if at all possible, either through the Zoom process or, um, live, now that we can attend the meetings live. Um, I, I have a lot of strong feelings about a lot of this and, and, uh, I, I guess, you know, we've got some good applicants out there and, um, I, I don't know what else to say except, you know, be cautious on how you're approaching this. Thank you.
Betty, could you state your last name for the record?
Retzer, R E T Z E R. And I was a member of the planning commission for 10 years and the chairperson for four.
Uh, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, and again, we're just looking at the direction here. Certainly county manager will come back with some ideas, um, that he may or may not have gotten from us today. Um, so if there is anything further, then, um, I'm not sure where else to go with this other than I appreciate your input and county manager will take the direction. So if we have a motion to direct the manager to take as our input today, and if we need more input, we'll certainly give it to you. Or do I have a motion to, uh, direct the manager to?
Mr. Chair.
Something there.
Mr. Chair, I, I moved that we direct the county manager to continue to review the, the appointment process with planning commission and come back to us at a later date.
I'll second that. So we have a motion by Commissioner Harrison, a second by me. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So you have your job in front of you and certainly we'll work together and have another presentation on information from that. Looks like, uh, fourteen I for possible action. Approve a contract for one year with the Universal Protection Service, LPDBA Allied Universe, Universal Security Services for Courthouse Security for an estimated amount of sixty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Council, for the record. So I did submit, uh, replacement backup today to Aaron. I do have a copy of it. If you wish, the only change is the dates, the start date of the contract and your backup is May thirtieth. The new date would be June twenty-sixth. Uh, after meeting with a pre-construction meeting with the judge and the contractor and facilities yesterday, it's determined that we're going to be moving in June, not in May for the district court to move over to the courthouse over here, which is where the contract is going to be. So it just seems appropriate not to have security sitting there if we don't have district court there. And so that's the one, one change for that. It is included in the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. You will actually have a person providing security at the justice complex and a separate person providing security at the old courthouse, which is what this contract is. That's all I have for you.
Any questions?
And just fun facts for you. We're expecting construction to start July tenth and then the following June twentieth. So.
Okay. Um, no commissioner comments or questions? So public comments or questions? All right. I guess we have a, uh, amount of money to spend here. Do I have a motion to do that?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve a contract for one year with Universal Protection Services, LPD slash B slash A allied Universal Security Services for Courthouse Security for an estimated amount of sixty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-two for an estimate. That seems pretty precise. So.
It's a very precise estimate. The changes would be district court sent them home early on a day or required them to stay then. And so that's what we estimate for years.
Motion by Commissioner Jacobson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes five zero. And now we get into. We are recessed to convene as Central Lyon County Vector Control District Board, item fifteen. And let me get to item fifteen here.
Public participation.
Yeah. Yeah, I just. Uh, public hearing on the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three and the twenty twenty-four.
Um, excuse me, Mr. Chair, we've got to do public comment first.
Well, that's right. Yes, right over there. Public comment. You have three minutes. If you want to have a public comment, please come up to the, uh, podium and put your name on the record. We've got a lot of those going through here. So it's kind of why I scratched it. You just put a brief explanation. Thank you for catching me. Um, so if you do have a public comment, so at least come forward to the podium, print your name. You'll have three minutes. Uh, no public comment on this one. Let's move on then to, uh, the public hearing on tentative budget.
Okay. If you will, just open the public hearing and take any public comments as soon as I let you know that the Department of Taxation did issue a letter that's in the packet stating that, uh, the tentative budget was in compliance with the battery vice statutes.
Okay.
So if you'll just open up the public.
I'm opening it up to public comment.
I'm seeing none.
Yep, I, I'm looking at the Zoom, looking out here. Nobody's going to do any public comment. So we're going to go ahead and go to sixteen B for possible action. Approve the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three for the Lyon County Vector Control District Board.
Okay. So there are no changes from the tentative budget to the finer budget. I am going to hand out, and this will include all of the budgets that we're doing today. The cover sheet is required to be signed by a majority of the board. Um, I would prefer to get all of you to sign it. We would be so willing when you do it, but I'm going to start half of them on one end, half on the other end. On the right-hand side, you're going to see approved by governing board. I just need five different signatures on that side, preferably on each one of these. And I'll pass them around so you can have fun. So I don't think it's much later at the end of this.
Five different, so I could put like Josh Foley on here as one signature.
Um, but anyways, with this one, there are no changes. So if you want to go for it, to approve.
Mr. Chair, yes, if you're ready, I, I, I moved that we approved the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for the Central Lyon Vector District.
So good.
Hey, we have a motion by Commissioner Harrison, second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor, say aye.
Mr. Uh, yes. Chair, we have to do a, do public comment on this.
Yeah. All right. Another public comment down that, uh, thought we did, but obviously caught on it again. Okay. No public comment on the Zoom in the room. I'm getting behind here on signatures. All right. So, um,
He was saying.
Motion. Got the motion. We got the second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, five zero. Motion passes. Give me a chance to catch up here.
Okay.
This was a test on multi-test testing.
Yeah, I don't want to.
We, we, we failed.
Yeah. I don't want to lose them in the stack of paperwork here.
Right.
Yeah.
Think I'm caught up.
I'll fix that.
Yeah, okay. Um, then let me just go ahead and close out that with the public participation, anticipated public participation will be held at this time. Anybody that has public participation will be given three minutes to talk. Please sign in at the podium if you have a public participation before we close out this section. Seeing none.
No, go ahead.
Okay, seeing none, we will, uh, move on and adjourn to convene as Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board. Uh, so we're going to reconvene then, and we have public participation again. Anybody that wishes may speak for three minutes. We might respect your comments. Please sign in at the podium. Hmm, that was eighteen, nineteen is Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement Regular Agenda, time certain. And it's a public hearing on the tentative public, pub budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. And I'm going to open the public hearing here for this, this budget hearing.
Catch for the line county controller, just, uh, so the board knows attached in the packet is a letter from the Department of Taxation stating the tentative budget is in compliance with the battery vice statutes.
Okay.
If you have any public comments, please.
Sounds like we are legal. So, uh, any public comment on that? Any commissioner comments on that? Nothing heard, nothing seen. So we will close the public hearing and I guess I'll need an approval of the final budget. We have a motion.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we approve the final budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four for the Ma- Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement.
Second.
District.
And just, uh, note on that, there are no changes to the family budget.
So we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Conclusion for this section with public participation, you'll have three minutes, no restrictions and sign in. Anybody want to talk more about that? If not, we'll close out item twenty and adjourn and then reconvene as Walker River Weed Control District Board. Same thing, public participation. You'll have three minutes and restricted comments. And if, uh, you do come up, please sign in. So we're going to go to item twenty-two, time certain. It is, uh, way past nine AM, public hearing on tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Open the public hearing at this time.
And Josh Foley, Lyon County Constable, just to note, there's a letter from the Department of Taxation in the packet that states that the tentative budget is in compliance with the battery vice.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Foley on anything there? Any public questions? Then look like it so we can move on to, uh, item twenty. Public, close the public hearing. And we'll move on to approval of the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. If I have a, a motion.
Chair, I, I moved that we approve final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, excuse me, twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four for Walker River Weed Controlled District.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Mr. Henderson. Motion, second Commissioner Hockaday, all those in.
For the record, if I could on that, so there are no changes from the tentative budget to the final budget.
Okay. Then I'll say, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Go as fast as I can, huh? Okay, adjourn as the weed control and moving. Nope. Yeah. Yeah. More participation. Anybody else want more?
Same rules.
Uh, same rules. Three minutes, no restrictions. Sign in. Twenty-three is done. Let's move on to adjourning that and moving on to convene as Willow Creek General Improvement District Board. Public comment. Anybody out there? Yeah. Three minutes, no restrictions. Sign in, please. Twenty-four done, twenty-five, Willow Creek GID Regular Agenda, time certain. We're past that. Public hearing on the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Public hearing is now open, Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Constable, for his record, there is a letter attached in the packet that's from the Department of Taxation. That states that the tentative budget is in compliance with the battery vice statute.
Any questions from the board on that? Any questions from the public? If not, then, uh, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll move on for possible action, approve the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Chair, if I could, there are no changes from the tentative budget.
No changes? Didn't think so. Oh, what? Here we go.
Yeah, excuse me. Um, we're on twenty-five C, right? I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right. Yeah. Almost got there. Okay, we're almost there. Okay. So now we're back there and, uh, we had the, uh, possible action, prove the final budget. And did we have a motion on that? I'm losing track. Motion on approving the final budget. Motion on approving the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four?
Mister Chair, I moved that we approved the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for the Willow Creek General Improvement District.
Hey. Make sure Henderson made the motion, do I have a second from Commissioner Hendricks? And I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, oh, I'm sorry, nay. Anybody have a nay? No nays, zero nays, five oh.
They called a horse.
Yeah, we had a horse in here earlier today on a phone, I think. Uh, twenty-five C for possible action, approve the debt management policy for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, and that was, of course, debt management for. The GID in Little Creek. Mister Foley, you have anything to say on that?
Yes, this is something that's required every year by statute, and so putting this in June like I will, the Lyon County one. Um, I anticipated you weren't gonna change the final budget, so. All of the elements uh, that are required by state law are in there. There's no new additional debt contemplated. It does have two uh, bond issues from the US they currently uh. For super bonds, and this just details our policies and uh, the repayments aren't existing.
Any questions on the debt management? I don't see any there, any public questions or comments. Nothing here, nothing heard, so we are going to go. Do the uh, approval of the debt management policy. Do I have a motion on approving the debt management policy?
Mister Chair, I moved that we approved the debt management policy for fiscal year twenty twenty-four for the Willow Creek General Improvement District.
Hey, motion by Commissioner Henderson, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Commissioner Hendricks, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay, nope. Passes five zero. Back to public participation. Uh. Same warning, three minutes, no restrictions, sign in, please. Twenty-six is complete, moving to twenty-seven. Same instructions as before.
Adjourned first.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, I guess we gotta adjourn to that one and go on to something new here. Adjourn and convene as Silver Springs General Improvement District Board. Now twenty-seven, public participation action be taken. If you have any comments, you'll have three minutes and re- no restrictions. Twenty-seven is done, twenty-eight, Silver Springs GID Regular Agenda, public hearing on tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, I'll open the public hearing, anybody out there? Any comments? No comments?
Just really quickly, there is a letter attached in the packet from the Department of Taxation stating that it isn't compliant with the Nevada revised statutes on the tentative statute.
Okay. Any questions on that? Good. Close the public hearing. Twenty-eight B, okay, oh, public comment, oh, we do have a public comment, okay.
It's kind of slow here.
Oh, yep, podium, please. Yeah. Twenty-eight A.
So it'd be, there are just.
Oh, okay, super. Um, so, we were on um. Twenty-eight B, approve the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Any commissioner comments on that? Anything from Judge Mister Foley?
Uh, the tentative budgets, there are no changes from that to the final budget.
Okay. Any public questions or comments on that twenty-eight D? I know we're gonna get to twenty-nine in a moment. I see none, so I will take a motion on approving the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three for Silver Springs General Improvement District.
I'll make a motion that we approve the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four for Silver Springs GID.
Second.
Hey. Motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion passes five zero. Now we'll go to twenty-nine. Now, come up, we're going, let me open it up here, we'll have public comment. Um. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state your name, write it on the record, and you'll have three minutes, okay?
And you're gonna get a Zoom call from my daughter Denise Martin, who's in California. Regarding Break a Heart Road in Silver Springs. It is a safety issue. She is, I have got. A little bit to talk to you about that. She is going to. Zoom, she's probably trying to get into you now. She wanted to speak and read this letter before I spoke.
So.
Yes.
Good. Probably one year is both participation on number thirty-two.
Okay, now, I, because this is my first word of thing, I, I've never done it before. So, anyhow, long story short, when I first walked in here, she said, go ahead and speak at this, so then.
Okay, so, but, the Silver Springs GID, all they do is sue for the.
No, 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 no.
So that's not what she was, right?
No.
So what I would recommend is that you come down to item number thirty-two, which would be just regular participation of the general commissioners, which we cover.
Okay, I was gonna start it up front to do the, speak the this one. Okay, I apologize.
That's alright.
Alright.
Brody.
Not a problem at all.
I wanna tell.
Okay, so we. Had twenty-nine, we're now going to adjourn and reconvene as the Lyon County Board of Commissioners. Any future agenda requests on item thirty?
Commissioner Henderson, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Jacobson.
You got eyes behind your head there, Chairman Hockaday. You're going crazy with public participation. Um, I would like to request a presentation by Tina Peterson with LP Insurance Services uh. For brokerage services, looking at uh, current and alternative options for property and casualty along with. Workers' compensation insurance, and then. I would also like to extend the same invitation to our current provider ANH, or whoever that might be, if they would like to come as well.
Okay. Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, I'd like something on there to where we would uh. Pick a. Parliamentary procedure to do. Resolutions and. Or just resolutions, and just for the purpose of resolution, not for anything else, eh, just, just for that, and then I want to uh, have a input from the. Of how we can uh, straighten that out, so I'll let the county figure out how to. Add to that agenda item, but that's what I want.
Okay. Commissioner Hendricks.
I do, I'd like to um, see if we can have a possible workshop to discuss revisions to permitted and conditioned uses along. Allowed in the zoning districts, allowed under the master plan, mis- mixed use, land use designation along our transportation corridors. And uh, under the new master plan, because there's so many that are allowed, and underneath those, there are so many that are just straight up permitted, I think we need to take a closer look at that. And also, the. Re-zoning um, process for commercial and industrial property, so that we, I'd like to see it done differently, so that we have a better idea of what we're saying yes or no to. And I'd also like us to discuss. Uh, ways of protecting Lyon County from the solar farms that are gonna be coming on BLM land.
County Manager Haskin, did you get all that? Good. Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair, I. It's probably for the second meeting in, in June. But I like an item about submitting comments to the BLM regarding their proposed conservation and landscape help rule.
And just uh, A- Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, for the record, just so you're aware, I am already working um, with our consultant on that.
Did you have another? What should I tell? No other input? Okay. If that's the case, then uh, we've got the future agenda request done, and commissioner comments, let's go from uh, Commissioner Henderson.
I don't have any comments at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Keller. Commissioner Jacobson.
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Hendricks.
None.
And I don't have any either, so we're gonna move on to our final public participation, and no action will be taken on anything that's not properly agendized, it's anticipated the public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to an end time during the agenda, citizens wishing to speak during public participation. Are asked to state your name for the record, and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comments after discussion of each agenda item, but before the board takes any action afterward, please put your name at clerk's desk. And that would conclude public comments for today, unless we have some. Wow, okay, ma'am, that's right, I am sorry, I can, I just.
Long day.
Yes.
Man, gentlemen, that was my horse as it was screaming earlier, y'all know that now. Long story short, my daughter's probably trying to zoom in right now. Her name is Denise Martin in California, to read you this letter, that would sum up a whole lot. If you'd like to hear from her first, and then I've got pictures to show you, I've got other things to discuss with you.
Okay, on zoom then.
Can you state your name for the record, sorry?
Susan Martin.
Okay.
I live at three five oh Break a Heart Road in Stagecoach, Nevada.
Yes. Okay, yeah.
I got three minutes.
Yeah. Is it three minute time limit?
Denise, sorry, Martin, yes.
So we do have her daughter on the line, go ahead and let her allow her. For three minutes.
Okay. Is she?
Whenever she comes on here.
Is she on the line?
She's online, un- unmuted at this.
My name is Denise Martin. And I would first like to say thank you for your time, as time is a priceless commodity, as well as acknowledge and commend the board and the many service commitments you give to your fellow Nevadans. I am desperately trying to get my mother's road added to Lyon County's road maintenance list. My mother Susan Martin lives at three hundred and fifty Break a Heart Road in Stagecoach. Break a Heart Road is a public safety hazard. I am bringing this issue to the board's attention. While I am deeply humbled. saddened with a heavy heart and trusting that everyone who reads or listens to my message will concur. That the motives for this request are valid, and my cause for concern is well justified. Breaking Heart Road is a dedicated right-of-way. It has been for years and desperately needs attention. Attention from the county and the resources from the road division are needed to mitigate this public safety issue. Break a Heart Road is a public hazard. One that has been proven to have deadly consequences. On Friday, November thirteenth, without warning, my stepfather Dennis Woodruff collapsed on the living room floor. Nine-one-one was called immediately, and the paramedics were dispatched. Waiting for the paramedics, Dennis goes unresponsive. But he is still breathing. My mother is holding him crying. When the paramedics arrived, they had everyone step away. When they re-approached my mother, they said that they had done all they could do for Dennis. But they were unable to revive him. With great sadness and utter disbelief, Dennis was gone. One of the paramedics stated what everyone knew already, which was that the road was treacherous, and it took far too long to get there. One of my biggest fears came to fruition that night. Someone gets seriously injured, and that road would make it impossible to get the help to survive. Now, I feel the only thing I can do is use this tragedy as motivation. In hindsight, I should have acted a long time ago. I cannot put into words how utterly disappointed I am in myself for not taking the preemptive steps. Eliminating this as a possible outcome. This devastating reality has shown itself in the most profound cruel way possible. And wow. What a great cost my family is paying. Presently, in good conscience, I cannot just quietly sit back and let history repeat itself. Can you? It's simply impossible for me. I still have family out there. Not clear on how many before, however, my stepdad's life was one life too many. My mother sleeps with oxygen and has a hard time getting delivery services out there because of the road conditions. Along with seven or eight other residents, which are also retired and may or may not be living with medical issues, they all fall in the greater risk category. But still, they have all spent hours dragging the road in hopes of making it a little more bearable. However, it's just never enough.
Yes, ma'am.
No matter keeping up with the amount of traffic. Not only is the road used every day for the residents. The public uses the road daily as well. At times, it seems like a community.
Three minutes are up.
Some traveling no less than forty-five.
Just close it then, that's the case.
Okay.
Now, what I have is here. On, on that particular day. The nine-one-one call, they got it eighteen sixteen hundred. It took them eighteen thirty-four to arrive. That's eighteen minutes. The Sheriff's Department, they were a minute off. You have it down here, and then sorry, you have it down here, for Break a Heart Road is a non-montained road. Now, before Fort Churchill was maintained, there was a horrible accident where a man lost his daughter and a preacher's son-in-law. Some of you may know about it, it's court records, I can't do, see, pull any of those records, because I'm not a member, I'm not a party to the, not a party to it. Long story short, we all went to court. The father was uh. He was awarded money, he said, I don't want the money, I just want the road maintained. That's when the road department first started. Maintaining Fort Churchill, the only, it's only done twice a year. I'm not asking for Break a Heart Road to be paved, just maintain. Now, I have pictures here, where the road was kept up to specs. On October twentieth, I'm twenty-two, I have pictures of DOT coming out there. And making the road, it's the best the road's ever been, and I've been living out there since two thousand and eleven August. I have a picture of the county's trucks and the three gentlemen that were working on the road. This road is beautiful. By being just maintained. That's my request. I'm asking that you allow Break a Heart Road to be a maintained road. Uh, I've tried. To get a whole even. You all sitting here, you all got a call, you all got an email on that letter. Nobody responded. Numerous, numerous calls have been made. To the Department of Transportation, everybody in there has gotten phone calls, et cetera, et cetera. I can pull. My phone out and give you the dates on the phone calls that were made. Nobody will return my call or anything, and says, okay, so what? I'm asking this commission, now, because nobody has bothered to even answer me, you mail me, send me a call, do anything to my daughter and I. I was forced to come here and look at you guys eyeball to eyeball and show you my proof. And I'm sorry for being a little upset and crying, but I was with this man for over twenty-five years. And if. Famous words, if, that, I talked to the paramedics. They said, well, what can they do? Because the road was not moving. I. Been sitting here all day. Trying hard, telling myself, okay, you're not gonna get teary-eyed, you're not gonna, but when you've been with a man for over twenty-five years, and it's happens like this, it's a little, it's, 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 yeah, it's a tear-jerker. I've uh, like I says, I can get on my phone and tell you the numerous phone calls my daughter has made. I am not. Computer literate or phone literate. I don't like them, I only do it for my job. After my partner, my fiance, we were gonna get married, he died before the divorce was going, fine.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate your input.
I've said a whole mouthful, because I was trying to jam it all in in your time period.
Right. And, and it is our three-minute limit for all public comment, so.
I could give you the dates, the times that the phone calls have been made to the uh, Department of Transportation.
Right.
And you all receive. And no- nobody's bothered to answer us, nobody will give us any kind of, my daughter and I, any kind of information.
Right.
On what your procedures are, or. Any help. I was forced to come here today.
That's right.
You what, sir?
We're not supposed to comment on public participation.
We are not allowed to comment on public.
But you all discuss things to amongst yourselves later on, right?
No, so, so Commissioner Keller. Go ahead.
So, under open meeting law, we can, we gotta let the public know what we're talking about, so you just told us. Something during public comment, if we agendize something, then at the next. So you just told us something during public comment, if we agendize something, then at the next meeting, we can talk about it, that's NRS, that's not us individuals trying to stop you or anything, if we talk about it or discuss it, then we're in trouble with the state. It isn't, eh, so, under public comment, you, you, you brought it to our attention, unless it's sitting on the agenda as an agenda item, we can't discuss it.
See, nobody would give me any, I, I did not know what to do.
Right.
Ma'am and gentlemen, I did not know what to do.
And ma'am, if you'd like to check my phone records, I haven't called any of these guys. All right, we're, we're getting a little off.
Yeah, okay, I did not know your procedures because nobody would call me and tell me anything.
Ma'am, if you'd like, we can talk after the meeting.
Yeah. All right, yep.
Yeah, we're done.
Okay.
You want me to leave the building?
No, no. No. Just, okay, all right, so we're. Do we have a closed session today? No closed session today, so without a closed session, then, uh, we'll go to item thirty-four and our meeting will be adjourned at two thirty-four or two four, two forty-three.